Hi Jess. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, Eileen.
Okay.
I think we should begin.
Alrighty.
We're gonna start the meeting and Eileen, David is going to read the notice.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notices this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, November 16th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Millburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purpose of board meetings. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into a remote virtual meeting. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and/or video. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. The supplemental notice was posted on the Millburn Township website, Millburn Town Hall bulletin board, and Millburn Town Hall front door supplemental notice was also forwarded to the Item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the official newspapers for the township of Millburn. Mary McNabb?
Here.
Craig Clentner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joy Segal?
Here.
Steve Togger?
Here.
Wolfgang Tutores?
Here.
Kevin Wenzel?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Glatte?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
All right, looking at the agenda for tonight, the first item is approval of minutes.
There are none.
There are none.
At all.
So we'll move to memorializations. There were two that our attorney couldn't have ready for last meeting, but they're ready tonight. The first is Gerstel at 18 Brooklawn Drive in Short Hills, which is calendar 3758-20. I want to take this opportunity once more to thank Mary McNabb and Joy Segal for working with our attorney, Gail Fraser. I almost said ex-attorney Gail on these resolutions. And I thank you both very much for working on them so assiduously. Are there any other additions or corrections on the first one? Alan Gerstel. Who's eligible on this one, Eileen?
Hold on one second. Um, both full members are eligible with the exception of Steve Togger.
Right, is there a motion from one of the eligible members who heard this case to approve the memorializing resolution?
Who approved the memorializing resolution?
Is there a second to Gerstel's resolution?
A second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Segal? Where did Joy go? I think we lost Joy. She's frozen. Yes, okay. Jessica Glatte?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The second and last memorialization is the famous one involving the big gate, as you may recall. Uh, this is calendar 3760-20, 39 Stewart Road, LLC. And this memorialization had some interesting corrections by both Mary and Joy. And Joy, I think the answer is that an LLC, the last time I looked, cannot have children. Okay, is there, who's eligible on this one, Eileen?
The same people.
Is there a motion to approve the memorializing resolution in 39 Stewart Road, LLC?
I move approval of calendar 3760-20.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Segal?
Yes.
Jessica Glatte?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that takes care of the memorializations and we're going into the applications. There are two applications on the agenda tonight. The first is a new one, 17, 177, I'm sorry, 377 Wyoming Avenue, which is on the corner of Elm, for those of you who went out to look at it. Uh, and the second is a continuation of one that we've had, I think, three prior meetings on, which is the one at 132 Millburn Avenue, which is a request for variances relating to a proposed fuel station and convenience store. Let's deal with 377 Wyoming Avenue first. There are a number of variances here. Is there an attorney in this case, Eileen?
This is Michael. Um, hold on.
Well, good, we're gonna get him to pronounce his name for us. Matthew.
Matthew.
All right, good evening, good evening. Matthew Kapalekia appearing on behalf of the applicant Bezad and Jennifer Soltani.
All right, Mr. Kapalekia, this is Joe Steinberg, the chair, and I have a question for you up front.
Yes.
Is it necessarily her main and maybe more catering to my own sense of whatever? But I'm really curious. This, I went to see this house. It's a pretty big house, built on that corner of Wyoming and Elm. And I'm very curious as to why this application was not brought before this board a year ago or way before the house was constructed. It looks like it's pretty much done.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I'm unable to answer that, that question. My client, Mr. and Mrs. Soltani are also on the, on the Zoom and they perhaps can provide some further clarity on this.
Well, it's not really, it's not really critical, except that I thought to myself, as I looked at all the contractors' trucks there the other day when I went there, I think it was Saturday, that I'm not sure that I would have built that enormous house without first making sure that I could put the pool and the pool equipment and the AC equipment where I wanted to put it. But let's have the two witnesses sworn so that we can get their testimony under oath. Mr. Fishman, will you swear them, please?
If you, if you just, first, you have to unmute.
You have to unmute.
Mrs. Soltani, you have to unmute. Yeah, okay, if you, if you would both just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Just state your name, spelling your names for the record, please.
Bezad Soltani, B-E-H-Z-A-D, Soltani, S-O-L-T-A-N-I.
It's Jennifer.
I'm gonna ask you both to keep your voices up.
Sure.
It's Jennifer Soltani, J-E-N-N-I-F-E-R-S-O-L-T-A-N-I.
Thank you.
Do not feel obligated to answer my question. It's not really part of the case. Okay, Mr. Kapalekia, you proceed, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, the applicants proposing to construct an in-ground swimming pool with surrounding patio as well as accessory equipment and an air conditioning pad on the property as depicted on their grading plans submitted in connection with the application. Uh, the application was originally set forth with some contemplated wall and fencing, which has been subsequently removed from the petition that's before the board tonight. The application would be in violation of Township Ordinance 6.09.5 for setbacks required on a corner lot. Uh, the property is on a corner lot. It is in an R5 zone. There will be also a violation of 609 1E for accessory structures in the front yard as well as location of air conditioning equipment, 609.1D location, location of air conditioning equipment in the front yard as well. We're respectfully requesting a C1 variance in connection with the hardship that is imposed on the property by virtue of the lot itself. Uh, in support of the application, testimony will be provided by Michael Aljurist, who is the professional engineer who prepared the grading plans, as well as John McDonough, the planner involved in the project. I would respectfully like to turn it over to Mr. Jurist to provide some additional testimony.
That's fine.
Mike? Mike, are you there?
Yeah, he's, he should be coming over.
Okay.
We're running out of room here. Where do you go?
I'm gonna ask you to have the witness give his qualifications as an engineer.
Coming up.
I brought him over. I don't know where.
Would you like me to start with Mr. McDonough, who is present?
That's fine.
All right, I'd like to introduce John.
Yeah, let me just warn him. Okay, swear from the testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough. That's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H, and I'm the project planner.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonough, would you please state your qualifications for the board?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. I am also a landscape architect, but I don't think we're talking about plants this evening. Uh, my primary role is as the project planner, and I do this on a nightly basis. I've been accepted in front of this board multiple times in the past and again throughout New Jersey.
Is your license currently in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Proceed, counsel.
Mr. McDonough, would you please advise the board of what you had reviewed in connection with this application and the, the facts related to the application before the board?
First thing, and I think I can play off of the, the chair's earlier commentary with, with some of the factual aspects of this application and again, this is going to be a pool that is going to be tucked into a notch of the building. It's sort of an, an L-shaped building, sort of custom-made to, to accommodate what the applicant is proposing here. I'm not sure about the timing, but I do agree that the, the timing is irrelevant to my, my planning analysis. I was going to share two photos of what I saw on Saturday when I was on the site as well. I did not see the chair there, so he either went earlier or after me. But I'll show you what I saw when, when I was on the site if I have permission to share screen.
You do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you'll see two photographs here.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Before, before you start, we're gonna have those two photographs marked as A1.
Thank you. So these are just going to be photographs of what I saw when I was on the site. This would be sometime after lunch on, on Saturday. I, I noticed I put down here November 15th, but I think Saturday was actually November 14th. Yesterday was the rainy day. I was out there on the nice day. But this is what you see when you pull off of Wyoming and you pull onto Elm, which is a sloping road. It slopes up from Wyoming and the subject house is going to be on your left here. It is a corner lot, which in and of itself is what is forming the basis for the variance here, and I'll, I'll explain that as we go through. But essentially, you see a home under construction, relatively new construction going on here. Formerly was a home on here, which was demolished. And again, application or, or building construction proceeding based on those approved plans. The pool is actually going to be on what would be the backside of this house or the effective rear yard, even though it is technically a side yard under the strict or literal read of the ordinance, and that's triggering our variance here. But there's a very practical aspect to this application and to the extent that the planning intent is to avoid pools in front of houses, this is clearly going to be a pool that is behind the house and not visible from the public realm as one would stand here on Elm Street. Next frame shows what you actually see when you go on the property. This is the notch that I'm talking about where the pool would be located. It's actually going to be ancillary pool equipment, air conditioning units that are going to be on the effective side of the house as well. It is a very modest-sized pool. It is going to be 10 feet wide by 20 feet long and effectively fit in that little notch that you see in, in the angle point of the home here. So in terms of the relief that the applicant needs, the primary relief, flipping back to that original photograph, is from the front yard setback on Elm Street. The ordinance has a requirement for a corner lot that the side yard facing the, the second street, I'll say, has a setback of 80 feet. The pool here, as measured back from Elm Street, is actually going to be at 66 feet. So again, it's fitting in the notch. It's in the back of the site, but it does require relief to be set back 66 feet from Elm Street as opposed to 80 feet. And then there is interrelated relief to have those, I'll say, interrelated structures, the pool equipment and the AC units in the effective front yard again. In terms of the justifications for the relief, I'm sure the board well knows that there's two paths an applicant can go down, the C1 hardship path, which is the older standard, and then of course, the newer standard, which is unique to New Jersey, which is the balancing standard or, or the C2, where we look at the benefits outweighing the detriments here. I think this is consistent with what I would call an older textbook C1 hardship case whereby the relief relates to the land and not the structure itself. We actually have the benchmark case that pertains to hardship variances is known as the Lang case. And that's the case that involved a pool that was forced into a setback by the land, not by what the courts called an otherwise ordinary-sized pool. And this is clearly not a case where it's the pool driving the variance, but rather the land driving the variance. So here, it's the shape of the lot. It's shallow depth from Elm Street that creates the hardship or the practical difficulty. Mathematically, there is an impracticality in fitting any accessory structure on this particular lot. The actual lot dimension is 100 feet deep. The front yard setback would be 80 feet and the rear yard setback is 12 feet. So again, you see that mathematically, there's only a very slender area that could accommodate any type of accessory structure. Again, reminding the board, the pool itself is not oversized. 10 by 20 is a typical ordinary-sized pool. And that's where, again, the Lang case found that where the land forces an otherwise conforming structure into a setback, there is a basis under the C1 subsection A provision of the law. All relief, as we know, can't be granted unless it can be approved without creating substantial detriment to the public or that substantial impairment to the zone plan. In terms of the impact on the public, pool is in an effective rear yard, even though this is a technical front yard. The pool is behind the building from Elm Street and completely blocked from view. And on the Wyoming street side, if we were to stand on the left, the pool and the structures are more than 100 feet away, which is well beyond the ordinance requirement. Lastly, with respect to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, the planning intent is obvious here to avoid pools or subsidiary structures that are in front of the principal structure. That's clearly not happening here. The planning intent is clearly met, and that goes from a physical standpoint. And also importantly, on the backside, the rear setbacks adjacent to those nearest homes is going to comply. So the setback relief is not for the back. It's for the front, where you won't see the pool. So all said, I think the board can clearly move favorably on this application, applying the C1 criteria. Regardless of where that building was positioned on the lot, the relief would still be needed. I think this is actually a, a more positive arrangement here, which starts to lean more towards C2. But again, clearly no substantially negative impacts associated with where the pool is. And with that said, I think I'll pause. I'll open up myself to any redirect from counsel here or, or cross from the board.
Counsel, do you have any further questions?
I have no further questions.
Board members, do you have any questions for this witness?
I have a question.
Yes, Mary.
So just to be clear, any accessory structure on this lot would require a variance?
Well, unless the structure were eight feet wide, because from a mathematical standpoint, the front yard setback is 100 feet, the rear yard setback is 12 feet, and we're dealing with a, with a 100-foot-wide lot. 80, I'm sorry, 80 feet in the front, 12 feet in the back. That equates to 92 feet. It's a 100-foot-deep lot. So essentially, maybe you could get a lap pool there, but that's it.
I, I have a question as well.
Yes, Joy.
When, when I went there yesterday, um, I couldn't find the address, so I found something 76 Elm Street. So it's, that's the house. I just want to make, that's what it looks like in photos. But my question is really, so what are you considering the front yard off of Elm Street, not off of Wyoming, right?
Yes, and we'll hear from, I think, the engineer next as to how the yard, he actually has the, the planning of the lot and, and you'll see. But the ordinance does require a setback from the, from the primary street on Corner Lot and from the, from the side street as well.
So if, what's your primary? Elm or Wyoming?
Again, I'm gonna defer to, to Michael or, or engineer in that regard, but the house is clearly oriented towards, with its long axis on, on Elm.
Right, I understand. I saw that. Yeah.
I have a question. Steve, you go first.
Very briefly, just for the record.
Come to the microphone.
This, uh, this home is in the R5 zone, is that right?
Thank you for that. Yes, I think I skipped right over that. It is a permitted use and the accessory use is permitted as well.
And this would be designated as an oversized lot?
Perfect. Another note that I didn't hit, yes. 20,000 square feet is what the lot is. 14.5 is what the minimum requirement is, so it is an oversized lot, correct?
Thank you.
My question is this, and I don't know whether you can answer it, Mr. McDonough. When the pool is in and assuming that the applicants get their relief when the pads are in, how much of this is going to be seen from somebody either driving or walking on the main street, Wyoming?
Well, I think it's in the applicant's interest as well to maintain privacy back there. I don't know if a landscape plan was submitted, but even if there were no landscaping, if I were to take a photograph from down on Wyoming, the landform rises up from Wyoming, so there's not only great horizontal separation 100 feet away, but there's also vertical separation. So this is an in-ground structure, so you clearly won't see the pool. You may see the people around the pool, but I think it is going to be substantially obscured, if not screened entirely. This is private space that does not want to be in the public view.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone from the audience who has?
One question, actually.
I'm sorry, yes, Wolfgang.
So yeah, one question, with respect to the pool equipment and the air conditioning units, it's unclear to me, is, is there, is there proposed to be fencing or some sort of enclosure for that?
Good question. Yes, there will be, and, and by pool regulation, there does have to be a fence around for, for safety reasons. And I, again, I'm going to defer to the engineer for the specifics on.
No, I'm speaking, speaking specifically about the air conditioning units and the pool equipment, not the pool itself. Machinery that's right next to the house, sits on the front, facing the Wyoming, facing Wyoming Avenue.
It, it, I can be corrected, but it looks to me that there, the fence does not wrap around the equipment itself. It only wraps around the pool and the patios that are associated with.
As far as we can tell, those units, those machinery units would be, would be visible potentially from, I guess, either Elm or Wyoming.
Potentially, I think a good mitigative measure is to create a foundation planting around it, which is typical of the area.
Yes, Kevin.
I was just wondering if there's a landscape plan available for us to look at. You, you're requesting relief for the equipment in front of the house, and then the, you know, the pool is close to the neighboring property to the back. I think it would be helpful if we could see what you're proposing to do from a landscaping perspective.
Thank you. I don't see a landscape plan. But I, we can, we can have the discussion when the engineer goes, and I can certainly come back and, and augment if need be.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Mr. McDonough, you indicated that the pool would be set back 66 feet from Elm. But when I look at the plan that's been submitted, it looks like the 66-foot setback is to the patio.
It's a good point. Uh, I don't know.
Pool is deeper, and although that dimension is not marked on the plan.
I'm going to defer that one to the engineer as well for specificity. I know there is a coping around the pool, and I'm not sure entirely if that dimension goes to the back of the house or pertains to the, to the coping, but 66 feet is the relief that the applicant has requested, and we'll get confirmation if it's actually deeper or not.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question?
If you're in the audience and you have a question, you need to raise your hand.
Anyone, Eileen?
Questions and answers, questions.
Question from Eric and Shannon Welner. I'll bring them over. And also, well, I'll get them first.
All right, we're talking about Eric and Shannon Weiner.
Welner. Don't worry, I get that all, all the time. See, my kids, uh, they, they mess with my background.
Okay, now, these are questions only?
Yes.
Not statements.
So I guess Ms. McNabb's question was the lot would need a variance no matter what, I guess, based on the way the house is built now, but could they have planned it from the beginning to where a pool would have fit on this property without needing special variances? And I, I, I guess the same idea with the, the equipment being in the front yard, being able to see that from both Elm and Wyoming. Should, should there be more information about what's going to be covering that?
Well, the question has been asked by a board member, and the witness has indicated that he'd like to defer the answer to that question as to what they propose around the equipment pad to the next witness.
Okay.
I had the same question.
And as far as the variance on the, the property as it is versus fitting a swimming pool on, on a corner lot, if it had been planned from the beginning? if it had been planned from the beginning?
That's a, that's a good question. And my position is regardless of the way the building were oriented, the relief would be required no matter what. Uh, again, because it relates to the plating of the lot, not the positioning of the building. And those setbacks are measured from lot lines, not not related to the way the building is oriented.
Steve, is that a question?
Yeah, I so I want to clarify a testimony that a variance would be required. I just want to make sure is the witness also testifying that the air conditioning unit variance would also be required regardless of design?
I'll place that testimony on the pool itself because, yes, the air conditioning units are less than the, I'll say, the eight foot width. So that applies to the pool. I'd say the the units relate to the to the positioning of the the pool itself. And for some reason, I feel like the the air conditioning units may have been previously approved. But again, I'm going to defer to Michael on on that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone in the audience?
Mr. Mrs. Welner, what's your street address?
87 Elm Street.
Thank you.
Joe, I have one quick question. Uh, to Mr. McDonough. So you, so you're basically saying that no matter where you put this air conditioning and pool equipment on the property, it's going to require a variance?
Well, I I the pool itself is leading the charge. And and again, I'm going to have to defer to Michael as to why the equipment is there and not in that narrow eight foot band at the back of the property.
Because it does seem like there would be other areas to put it where it wouldn't require a variance on the on the lot.
Well, it would be in that that eight foot band between the 80 foot setback and the 12 foot setback. But bear in mind, if you did slide it to, I'll say, the back of the house as opposed to the side of the house, then it gets closer to that house behind you. They may be, that may be starting to trend more towards the C2 balancing test as opposed to the C1 hardship test. That the location is a better zoning alternative. Um, again, I'm just going to pull up the screen real quick, and you'll see this on on the plan as well. There is a structure that comes out off the side of the building that I'll say armors or protects the homes that would be behind this house from that from that equipment, which would be on on the side. So if the units were to slide to the back of the house, they would be closer to the homes behind. Um, and would not have the same protection for those adjoining neighbors as this little bump out provides uh, based on where their the units are proposed. So in that regard, there is an element of C2 balancing here as well, where the benefits outweigh the detriments. And as I said, I think the relief can be mitigated by landscaping that wraps around the building. Taller structures that would screen and be be taller than the proposed units.
You keep bringing up the C2 variance, but it seems like these hardships are manufactured.
Well, I think the board well knows it either had up to to attain variance relief, you can go down either C1 or C2. Here, again, I think there's a hardship overall to the extent that the the board feels the hardship does not apply for the um, for the equipment and for the AC units. I think the board can move favorably based on the C2 balancing test whereby the location represents a better zoning alternative for all properties involved, especially with sensitivity and consideration for the neighbors to the rear.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience with a question? Now, audience members, you will have an opportunity at the end of the case to speak to this case.
I have a question, Joe. There's a gentleman who has a question, so I'm going to bring him over as well.
Okay.
Let's start video. Hello, this is Cynthia Bersinski. I live at 371 Wyoming Avenue, just a couple houses away. Um, I have a couple of questions. I see the engineers in there. I'll do my best to make them in sort of a landscape architect planning mode. Um, I know that the plan, there is no landscaping plan, but there's a grading plan. Um, sheet one of two that shows some wall system that we can see, uh, possibly, uh, uh, it would be like right at the grade of the pool or slightly higher. Um, and on the detail, it says it's a rubble wall, which is typically a a graded stone wall with which has, just like the detail shows, um, larger on the bottom and smaller on the top. Uh, my concern is note one of that detail that says that the stone should be a minimum of eight inches thick, two inch, two inches wide, or sorry, two inches wide, one second. 12 inches wide and three foot long as a maximum. So technically, you could make a boulder wall here because you're asking for minimums, and it wouldn't be one of those beautiful graded walls that we have in this Wyoming section. So I just want to know, what will that wall look like? It's going to be what we see from Wyoming as we drive by. There's two tiers. And can someone describe what they're really going to look like?
Well, yeah, I I think to play it safe, I better roll that down to our engineer. His name is on the plans, so.
Because you can see there's conflict between the way the detail looks and that note one, there are two different wall systems.
Now, where is your, where are you seeing the note?
Okay, on sheet two of two for the rubble masonry retaining wall detail, it shows the typical graded stone wall system at a batter. And it says maximum four foot high, so it could be, these wall systems could be built at four foot. However, note one said designate stone, because I've I've put a wall in myself, so I know. If you have a wall that's a minimum of eight inch and 12 inch and can be three feet long for each element of this wall, you're not talking about one of these graded walls. I think you're talking about one of those walls that they bring a mechanical, like a backhoe in and drop off a large boulder. And the boulder can be two foot high, or it could be two layers, two 12 and 12. And I just wanted to know, is that what they're proposing? I'm curious.
The witness has indicated that he wants the engineer to answer that question. Is there anyone else who has a question from the audience?
I have another question.
Yes.
Okay, this is with respect. It's actually probably directed to the engineer, but I want to put it on the video. I was curious about what the invert is of the outflow pipe of the dry well system. I know it's for the engineer, but in in the case, it even in the case of the pool possibly having differential settlement, settlement and and breaching, the water would go into this dry well system. And I'm curious, because it looks like on the plan, the invert is 59, and the invert of the dry well is 50, is 55. That would mean only four foot of storage of the nine foot deep dry well would be ever used. So I'm I'm concerned about the capability of the drywall system being able to hold water.
I'm sure Will will address that issue as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's more not really a planning or a landscaping is probably more of an engineering. I just wanted to mention it that I was concerned about those inverts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonough, you will need to email those two photographs to Eileen David uh, that were marked into evidence. Anything that was marked into evidence that has not previously been provided as a digital record has to be emailed to Eileen. And Eileen, when you get those photographs, would you forward them to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, counsel, your next witness.
I'd like to introduce Michael Jurist to the board. Michael Jurist is the professional engineer in connection with the grading plans. Michael, are you on?
Can you hear me?
I hear you, can't see you.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
All right, hold on.
All right, we can see you now.
Okay, I've gotten dropped off twice so far, so hopefully if it happens again, I'll pop back in, but I don't know why that was the case.
You're going to have to speak up.
Um, I got dropped off twice off the video. My, I got, I got dropped off the video twice and had to reboot to get back in, so hopefully it'll be fine.
We can see you now.
Okay.
Mr. Fishman, would you swear in the witness?
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the test room we're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth done by the truth?
Yes.
Just state your name and spell it for the record.
Michael L. Jurist, M I C H A E L. Initial L, J U R I S T. You want credentials?
Yes.
So, uh, by the way, my, I live around the corner from this property. I'm at 82 Pine Street in Melbourne, right off Wyoming. My bachelor's degree is in civil engineering from Florida through technology. My master's in civil engineering is from Polytechnic University. I'm a licensed PE in the state of New Jersey since October of 1996. That number is 24G is in Great, E is in Edward, 04008000. I've testified before the filing, planning and zoning boards and surrounding municipalities, Summit, Morris, Melbourne, Montville, New Providence, Bernadetteville, Mountainside, Tom's River, Springfield, Westfield. I'm a practicing civil engineer since 1986 and have completed hundreds of grading and site plans, including subdivisions.
I can introduce Mike, Michael Jurist as the professional engineer on behalf of this application.
His qualifications as an engineer are accepted by this board.
Okay, I I think I'd like to take the time, Mr. Chairman, to just address some of these questions rather than rehash the overall project.
That's fine.
Um, I tried to take notes here, so, you know, forgive me if I missed anything. Screening of the AC units, there will be screening. It was part of the landscape plan that I don't have, but uh, there will be screening for those AC units in the front. Um, somebody had asked the question about AC units and whether or not they could fit anywhere else on the property and the pool equipment plan pad as well. So there's a setback requirement for that utility items for the specifically the pools, pool equipment pad is a 36 foot setback minimum requirement. And I don't see anywhere else on the property other than the front yard along either Elm or Wyoming, where that would be the case. You can't put it in the side yard because it doesn't meet the 36 foot setback. And that's in either side yard. By the way, there are two side yards and two front yards. The two side yards are the area where the pool is going to be, you know, we're proposing the pool to be located. And the other one is on the right side as you're facing the house from Elm Street. The two front yards are obviously Elm facing and the Wyoming facing. So hopefully that, I don't know, does the person who had the question about the pool equipment pad have any further follow-up questions?
Why don't you, why don't you continue with your testimony?
Okay. Let's see. They mentioned the landscape plan, that one will be provided. Um, there was a question about the boulder wall. It's a boulder or rubble wall. Um, I'm not sure what the individual was asking about, but there are two times, there's two details that you can use for this. I took a more conservative approach, but um, you know, you can certainly um, go with just strictly large boulders and not sized stones from the bottom going up. We're not talking about anything higher than two feet here. Uh, even though the wall, the detail allows up to a four foot high maximum height, everything in the front yard. It's got to be two feet or less. That's a stipulated requirement for retaining wall height in the front yard. So, you know, it most likely will be um, boulders or rubble wall construction. As far as the retaining wall is on the left side, as far as that's concerned, that's a modular block retaining wall, like a techo block. And that covers the um, the, if you're facing the pool from my Wyoming Avenue vantage point, that would be on the left-hand side. It's clearly marked there and labeled as a modular retaining wall. There was also a question about whether or not, whether or not the 66 foot setback to the patio covers the the pool as well. My understanding of the regulations is that any accessory structure, whether it's a pool, a patio or deck, whatever the case may be, you take the closest of those items to the um, front yard, and that's your setback point. So the patio where it's 66 foot setback to Elm Street, that is the least, the the lower of the distances rather than the pool distance to to Elm Street. Of course, on Wyoming, you have plenty of space. It's more than adequate as far as setback is concerned. But for the Elm Street side, you take the the closest accessory structure, and that's the setback that you're seeking relief on. Uh, I think the last question that I remember as I took my notes was from the same woman who had the question about the rubble wall about the invert elevation. So the invert elevation has to be lower than the great the storm sewer. This is strictly an overflow pipe from the drywall system. The drywall system will hold enough runoff from all the roof leaders for the new uh, home that was built there, uh, including the runoff where the impervious coverage, I should say, is created by the pool in its current space. The overflow invert elevation 59 is lower than the inlet's great elevation, which is 60.26. So it's slightly under that, and that's the way it should be in order to positively drain off the rainwater coming from the roof leaders around the prop, around the house. I think I covered all of the questions. I'm not sure, but if I didn't, please speak up, and I'll try to answer them as best as possible.
Counsel, any questions?
Um, Michael, can you just provide for the board some uh, uh, testimony regarding the situ, the house as it's situated on the lot and the placement of the pool and the accessory structures?
Sure. And and by the way, I also clarify the original variance when it was, I'm sorry, the original plans that were submitted required two extra variances that we managed to eliminate. One was a safety fence or fence in general that was beyond the front facing of the house along Wyoming. That we cut the fence back, so it just stops at the front facing of the house and doesn't exceed that length. So that variance was not necessary. And then we also took away the safety fence from the modular wall, which is, as I talked about previously, on the left side as you're facing the house from Wyoming. Uh, the combination of a fence on top of a wall, which is the way it was designed originally when it was submitted, was they they count the fence and the and the wall height together, so it was higher than the six feet maximum requirement. So those two, um, those two variances were eliminated. And we're left with the setback for the accessory structure and the location of the AC units in the in the pool equipment pad in the front yard, which is where I think they go. And we're left with the setback for the accessory structure and the location of the A.C. units in the pool equipment pad in the front yard, which is where I think they go. The original grading plan was prepared for the new home construction. There was a house there that was knocked down, a new house built in its place. The architect was Tom Bayo and Associates. The house was situated within the setback requirements that are allowed for side yards. And the height and everything met the building requirements. There was some thought process, I guess, by the homeowner to possibly include an ancillary structure, like a patio, introduce a patio to the quote "side yard", so that they could put a table out there and chairs and enjoy outside dining. Possibly a pool, that wasn't really a definite consideration for them until more recently. But the house was designed and constructed in accordance with all regulatory requirements within Melbourne Township.
Thank you, Michael.
Any further questions, counsel?
None at this time.
Board members, any questions to this witness?
Yeah, a quick question.
Yes.
So, Mr. Jurist, you mentioned that the pool was a secondary thought. So where were you originally gonna put the air conditioning equipment?
So the A.C. equipment was originally on the other side yard, the one along Elm Street. There were two units, if you look at the original drawing. And it was, it was a lot closer to the neighbors than it is right now.
So at what point were you gonna apply for zoning variance for that?
No, we didn't. We didn't admit the setback requirements, but it was a lot closer, is what I'm saying, to the neighbor than what it's in current situation.
So why wouldn't you put it there? Just because it's too close to the neighbor?
Yeah, it's close to the neighbor, and the pool equipment pad couldn't fit over there anyway, so it had to be put in the, you know, in the only logical place, which would be the front yard.
Right, but the A.C. does comply over there.
Oh, well, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Yes, Joy.
I know that the architect is not here, but I guess I'm just very curious. When I went to, the first thing that struck me is, why is the house so far off of Wyoming?
Yeah, you know, I really don't know the answer to that, Joy. I didn't design it that way.
A lot of the issues that we're talking about result from that.
No, I think they, listen, they were, the house was built in accordance with the, you know, setback in lot coverage requirements. There was no...
Was it allowed to be closer to Wyoming?
I'm sorry?
You know, if it was permitted to be closer to Wyoming?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could definitely move the house closer to Wyoming if you wanted to.
I know it's not relevant because the house is there, but I just, I'm trying to find out why such a large lot can't fit such a small pool. And it just seems like it's probably because it's so far off Wyoming.
No, you'd have the same issue regardless of that. That would be the same exact issue, no matter where you play. If you slid the house all the way down to Wyoming, you'd still have the issue of setback off of Elm Street. There would still be an issue.
Right, but it would make, it would hold the street wall and make a street scape. Yeah, okay, I understand your point. Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's honestly, it's hidden more in this sense than any other possible location. It's impossible to see the pool. I mean, by the time you've been with landscape...
Any other questions from board members?
I have a question. Mr. Jurist, is the patio going to maintain 12-foot accessory side yard setback from the adjacent property on Wyoming?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Any other questions from members of the audience?
Yes, I do have one. Hi, this is Cynthia Brzinski. I'm at 371 Wyoming. Cross slope from this property by two houses. I'm the person, an engineer, civil engineer, who had the question about the variegated stone wall, which is typical in this area. The detail shows a typical stone wall that would be acceptable and quite often seen as a character of this whole community. However, the boulder wall is something that does not, it's not nearly aesthetic, doesn't have the same qualities.
I can barely hear you. You're cutting in and out.
Okay, the detail for the rubble wall masonry wall showing variegated-sized stone
Yes.
is in conflict with note one, which allows for boulders of, let's say, two by two feet. And you just mentioned that you're planning to perhaps put a boulder wall instead of a rubble wall up. And I'm curious why you would not update your detail to show a boulder wall, because this is a hand-constructed variegated wall that is shown on the detail.
You're right, it's missed, and it should be, it should be the boulder detail. You're absolutely right.
But we don't want to see typical boulder walls placed by a backhoe, especially that's, that's what we're gonna see. We're gonna see a vast 10% slope.
This is questions only now.
Wall of boulders.
There's a house right along Wyoming.
Yeah, that one shouldn't have, it doesn't, that doesn't correct the problem. That's not the nature of the community, and you live very close.
Excuse me, now is not the time to make statements. You'll have...
Statements after the...
Okay, well, that is the wall that we're gonna see from Wyoming, and I think it's important that it looks proper. Okay, the other question I had, which wasn't really properly addressed, was the issue of the outlet pipe from the nine-foot-deep drywall, of which your calculations show that you've executed the whole nine-foot depth of the drywall for storage purposes. I'm curious, for the outlet pipe that leads to an existing catch basin, what is the invert coming from the drywall, which has a lid elevation of 64, an invert of 55? The outlet, the outlet pipe would have to be close to the top, not the bottom, otherwise the water just simply drains right out. And in addition to that, the invert that goes into the catch basin can't be lower than the catch basin. In other words, it will never make it into the catch basin. It has to be higher than the invert of the catch basin.
The grade, is that a question?
I was talking about the grade elevation.
I'm talking about the inverts. I'm really concerned about just two inverts, the invert coming out of the drywall, which should be only for overflow, which means it's at the top of the drywall, and the invert coming into the existing catch basin. Those are the two inverts that I'm concerned about. Because these, this drain...
You're about to make a statement.
Let him answer the question.
Okay, okay, got it. So two inverts, that's my question.
The invert for the line, the overflow line going into the, into the catch basin is 59.
But the catch basin 59.14, which is, how is it gonna make it jump up into that catch basin?
That's the, that's the drain line.
Correct, the drain line. Yes.
So it's higher than the drain line is low. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
On the planet, it shows the catch basin, it is 59. Okay, I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay, so if it goes in at 59, okay, what does it come out of, of the drywall? It should be close to the top of the... Just under the top?
Yeah.
Because you could, should probably add that to the plan then.
That's fine.
Okay, so it would be what? Would it be like a little bit under 64, or it's a six-inch pipe, right?
Well, actually, the grade there, I think, is 65.
Well, I mean, the lid is 64.0, right? Oh, on the detail, it said 64.0, right, the grade, the grade is 65. But it, there was a detail that said that the lid elevation was 64.
Yeah, so it would just be a little bit below that.
A little bit below that. Okay, if you, if you could just add that, so it's, so that they don't construct it in the middle or towards the bottom, that would be good.
Eileen, this is gonna require a lot grading and drainage.
Yeah, we typically get involved in, this is, all has to go through the engineering department, so this is really not the board's...
Listen, the engineer, the engineer reviewed the plans, they approved the plan originally, because I needed a grading plan when the house was before...
Those two important grades are missing. They're not really clear. There's a statement of 59.0 that leads to the middle of the exiting pipe from the, from the drywall, I mean, from the drywall, I keep on calling it, drywall. It needs two inverts, one coming from the drywall and one going to the catch basin.
Right, but this will be reviewed by our engineering department. If this project is approved, the revised plan will have to be submitted to our engineering department.
Right, as long as those two are on the plan, that would work. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the audience?
Yes, I do have one. From Lee Koss, Koss.
Mr. Koss, we can't see you yet, and you'll have to unmute.
I think he's there for the New Jersey Energy. I think it's David Saxel who's there.
That's, I'm, I'm a lady, but I'm here for the New Jersey energy variance request.
All right, I saw your hand up. All right, we'll bring you back then.
No. Pardon me?
So you're not here for this application?
No, I'm just been, been listening to this until it's time for our, for our business.
Okay.
Eileen, you'll move her back?
Yes, she's back. Let me just see if there's anybody else. I don't see any other hands, no.
All right, now...
Hey, I just got a hand raised. Well, now it got put down. I don't know if this guy...
Right, board members, this is the opportunity for you to comment on this case, and then we'll...
Hold on one second, because I do have a Mr. Saxel, whose hand keeps going up and down. I don't know if he's got a question, or, all right, I'm gonna bring him over. He doesn't have a question. And see what the issue is.
Is that David Saxel?
82 Elm Street. So I'm the house right above the new construction.
You have a question?
Well, I have a comment.
No, this is not the time for comments. You'll have your, you'll have a turn.
Okay, no problem.
All right, board members, questions, comments?
I have a comment. I would like to see the landscape plan or what they have in mind to deal with the pool equipment. I'm not, I was thinking that all the applications that we have for new construction and other adjustments to homes, patios and pools are considered at the time that the construction is built, and so that kind of bothers me a little bit. But in any event, I need to see a landscape plan.
I would concur with that. Anyone else? Comments? All right, now, if there are no more comments from the board members, let's hear from the audience. I think the gentleman next door said he had a comment.
Yes.
Mr. Saxel?
Yes.
There he is. Now, Mr. Saxel, you need to be sworn.
So just raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, whole truth done by the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and your address for the record again.
David Saxel, 82 Elm Street.
And where is your home in reference to this?
Right above the new construction, same side of the...
You're next door?
I'm next door.
Up, up on the upside of Elmwood, of the home?
Elm Street, right above the house on top.
Go ahead.
So my first comment is, I don't wanna see the pool equipment on my side of the house. So I know Mr. Plonner was kind of pushing, like, could we put it on the other side? Why isn't it on the downhill side? So I have no interest in seeing it on that side of the house. I also feel like this should have been taken care of going into the construction, not at this point. I also feel like the town didn't do a great job with the architect, just like that lady said before, about why is the house right there? And I have no problem with the house and the size and everything else, but I don't know why Bayo would have stuffed it in the corner and let these issues arise now. So, I mean, that's how I feel, living right there. You know, the other house, the other house was situated at the bottom of Elm Street, closer to Wyoming. And now I think they're even closer to the property line than they should be. So I don't think the town did a great job, either, or the architects protecting the neighborhood. I've been in that house for almost 25 years. And now, you know, I feel like we're going at it at the last minute, which I don't think is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Eileen, I'm going to ask you, is the, if this house were any closer to the property line, the property line up Elm, would, would they need a variance?
Yes, everything met the requirements of the ordinance, that construction of the house.
Eileen, we need to swear you in.
Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's hearing to be the truth, whole truth done by the truth?
Yes.
Say it again.
As it was presented to me, met the requirements of the ordinance with regard to front setbacks, side setbacks, and everything else. The only thing proposed was a house, and that's all I was issued at the time. That's why I put it in position.
All right, anyone else in the audience have a comment? I hear none, and I see none, Eileen.
I have one more comment from Ms. Brzinski. Hold on one second, I'll bring her back.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, whole truth done by the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Brzinski at 371 Wyoming Avenue.
And where is your house in relation to the...
It's one house away on Wyoming from this house.
When you say away, is that closer to Melbourne Avenue?
It's on Melbourne Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on Wyoming, sorry, on Wyoming.
There's one house in between.
There's one house in between my house and that, and the house that's already...
Okay.
It's a 69.
What is your... What is your comment?
My comment is, with, just putting it out there as a person who's lived here for thirty years, there's only one house that has boulders in front of it. And I do not believe we should continue in that same vein plant, you know, as we go forward and plus this application to allow that sort of construction, it's, it's, it doesn't show the workmanship and the integrity of the neighborhood, which is, which is for the most part built during the thirties. And it, it isn't, it, it, it doesn't seamlessly work to start having a, a backhoe deliver boulders and just stacking them on top of each other. Plus, I don't think with that steep slope, it's gonna look that good. And I am also curious to see the landscaping plan, since there's a appreciable amount of property that's on a slope that's needs, uh.
Okay, let me interrupt you to say that, uh, the boulder fence is not, Eileen, is that correct? It's not really involved in this case?
Not at all.
No, the boulders are, they, they have not been put up yet, and they are part of screening for the pool.
But there, there's no variance required for those walls, they meet the requirements, so the board is not ruling on the law.
Okay, well, in that case.
Your question is really aesthetic, right? Aesthetic.
Aesthetic, aesthetic and going forward how we approve application.
Let me say this, as far as aesthetic, as far as aesthetic, aesthetic matters are concerned.
Yeah.
You are quite free to talk to Mr. Jurist at your convenience outside this hearing room, this virtual hearing room, but the board has no jurisdiction to deal with that particular aspect of the construction.
Well, the board approves applications based on their details and plans, and this detail does not match the boulder wall that's being proposed. It shows a rubble wall.
So walls are not part of this app, they're not part of this variance application, there's no variance required for those, so they're included on a plan, but there's no variance needed for them, they meet their two-foot requirement or the maximum two-foot front yard wall height.
And it's purely an aesthetic matter.
We don't make.
It's not a variance matter.
Well, it's a planning board matter, and this is a board of adjustment, but, uh, I just want to make that comment.
That's fine, but the walls are not involved and the board has no jurisdiction over the walls in this application. It may be a planning board matter, but this is a residential property, site plan approval is not required for residential properties. The board's jurisdiction in this application is limited to the pool and the location, the location of the pool with the front yard setback, and the placement of the accessory pool equipment and AC units in the front yard. That is of the board's jurisdiction.
And having to do with the fencing pertaining to the, to the.
No, the fence is in a conforming location.
Okay, well.
All right, board members, it has been suggested by Mary McNatt, and I agree entirely with her, that this is not a matter where we can simply say, oh, we can suggest or make a condition, for example, that there be evergreen uh, bushes or trees around that equipment. I think this is a case where we really have to see a landscaping plan. How do board members feel about that?
Is the landscaping plan going to be approved?
That will, that will depend on the plan and how the board members view it.
That seems to be a comment of the neighborhood, is to see the landscaping.
Well, it's a matter, if, if the board concludes that a landscaping plan should be uh, submitted prior to the board voting on this matter, then this matter will be carried and the neighborhood will be able to see the landscaping plan, which will be at the city hall, and will be able to come to the next meeting and comment on whenever, whenever the meeting is that this matter will be carried to. But I want to find out from board members, how do you feel about Mary McNett's comment?
I, I would not approve the plan as it currently stands without seeing a, uh, landscaping plan.
I, I agree with that.
Same here.
I see a lot of heads going like this, and mine is one of them. All right, uh, Eileen, when do you think this matter can be carried to?
Are we strictly looking at a landscaping plan?
We're looking at this matter being, coming before the board again with the, with the, approve, with a landscaping plan that the board members can look at and comment as to whether or not it is appropriate.
Our next meeting is December seventh. If that's enough time for them to get something together, if not, it would be December twenty-first.
If I could.
Counsel, it's really up to you.
Yeah.
How fast do you think?
Matt, if I could speak.
Yes, please on.
Yeah, there, there is, there is absolutely landscaping plan, um, I, it was oversight which was not submitted, yes, this, this has absolute landscaping and there's protection all around that area, and as a matter of fact, I just also want to make a note the reason for air conditioner, uh, unit, that is the best location, that is, I, I think that, that for, for the, the neighbors actually is the furthest away from any neighbor within that area. Um, or the neighbor just came and commented, as a matter of fact, that was specifically, uh, it's beneficial to them to move it to that side, and there's no one around there. But, but as it relates to the landscaping plan, absolutely, there is one that can be submitted immediately.
Right, counsel, uh, I suggest to you that you look at that landscaping plan with your experts, and we'll carry this matter, when is the next meeting, December two?
December seventh.
Seventh, December seventh, right, I'm gonna make an announcement now that this matter will be carried to the evening of December seventh, it'll be a Zoom meeting again. Uh, there'll be no further notification in the newspapers or to neighbors by, uh, letters required. Uh, but the matter will be heard by this board at seven o'clock PM on that day, December seventh, no further notice or publication required. And you'll need to file everything. Gail, how far in advance?
Ten days before the hearing date should be filed.
At least ten days before the hearing date, so that the, the papers can be seen by neighbors at the city hall.
Is it only one copy you need, Mr. Chairman?
I'll need it, uh, one for the file, and if you could send me a PDF, that would be great, so I can put it on the website. Do you all want your own, a hard copy as well, each board member?
That would be a good idea.
Okay, so send me, uh, twelve hard copies and a PDF.
Very good.
Okay, I think we've made the announcement as.
Eileen, do we need a consent to an extension of time?
Uh, let's see, deadline to decide is November twenty-second, so yes, we will need a deadline.
Counsel, will you agree that we have an extension of time until December the eighth?
Yes.
And counsel, will you submit something in writing to the clerk tomorrow via email?
Yes.
Thank you.
Will there be?
Thank you very much.
Will there be a necessity for the landscape architect or the landscape designer to, um, testify? Or do you just need to see the plan?
Well, if the board has any questions, someone's gonna have to be able to answer them.
I think it's prudent, we make them available.
Good idea. All right, thank you very much, and we're gonna move to the next case, which, uh, is well-known to everybody on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. All right, the next case.
On this one.
And the last case for the evening is New Jersey Energy applicant for the property at one thirty-two Milburn Avenue. We've heard this case, I believe, on three prior evenings, is that correct, Eileen? I think it's three, it's at least two, maybe three. Is counsel here?
Yes, Mr. Passato is here.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Hi.
Joe, I'm, I'm recusing on this one.
Is that Wolfgang?
Yes.
Yes. Good night, gang.
Good night.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say for the record that, that I, uh, listened to the, um, YouTube of the meeting and submitted an affidavit to Ms. Daffet and to Gail Fraser.
Thank you very much. So every, all the, uh, members of the board can hear this case, correct?
Yeah, I, I want to add too that I listened to the YouTube recording and I sent my signed affidavit that I've listened to the recording for one of them.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
And, and if you may ask, how many eligible voting members then do we have here tonight for this application?
We have, um.
We have.
A full board, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have seven members here.
Mr. Passato, is there anybody else that I need to bring over?
Uh, just John McDonough, he'll be our planner and also landscape architect for tonight.
All righty.
All right, mister, do you want to swear the witness?
Sure.
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, um, I would just like to advise the board that, um, I, I believe Eileen and I received communication from, uh, John J. Delaney that, um, he is no longer appearing on behalf of the adjacent property owner. Um, they are not, no longer participating in the case.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McDonough, if you would, first unmute yourself and then we'll swear you in. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, hold truth done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Sure, my name is John McDonough, M C, capital D O N, O U G H.
Thank you.
Mr. Passato, can we have the witnesses' qualifications, please?
Uh, yeah, sure, uh, John, can you please provide your educational credentials and name at least three boards you've been qualified as an expert in both planning and also landscape architecture as well for tonight?
Sure, my license, uh, I'm sorry, my education comes from Rutgers, I have a degree in planning and landscape architecture, I also have licenses in planning and landscape architecture here in the state of New Jersey. And I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is our national certification. My license is current and in good standing, and then the trick question, the three, three boards I've appeared in front of recently, I don't know, I do this every night, I've been in front of Milburn before on multiple occasions, uh, let's say Livingston and West Orange, uh, in close proximity.
And your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes.
Fantastic, does this board accept me as an expert witness in both landscape architecture and planning for tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, John, are you familiar with this subject site?
Yes.
The subject site located in the R, R, OR two zone district?
Yes.
Are you also familiar with the township's master plan?
Yes.
Did you review the proposed project in the township reports while also taking consideration the township's master plan and zoning ordinance for the OR two?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion the proposed project is consistent overall with the intent and purpose of both the master plan and zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Uh, can you please describe to this board, uh, the planning testimony regarding those proposed and requested variances in connection with this application?
Sure, my planning conclusions are not made in a vacuum, this is not a net opinion. Uh, it's not a matter of whether I like the use or dislike the use or like the brand or don't like the brand, this is really a planning opinion that is based on the predicate of the expert testimony, a controverted expert, uh, testimony that has come before me, uh, that this particular project will produce public benefits, uh, without creating any substantial, substantial detriment to the public or any substantial impairment to the zone plan and ordinance. To lay a further foundation for my planning conclusions, what I'd like to do is, again, enter an exhibit, uh, it's going to be a series of pages, and, um, I'll walk the board through, I'll say the planning foundation for my conclusions from a physical planning standpoint. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we'll, we'll do the screen share again.
Eileen, please confirm we're up to A five?
Uh. Just doing the minutes today, I believe that is correct, yes.
Thanks.
So I will refer to this as exhibit A five with today's date eleven sixteen twenty, and this is going to be a series of seven slides, I'll, unless, uh, counsel wants me to do it a different way, I'm just going to say exhibit A five, page one, exhibit A five, page two, and work through that way.
That's fine.
Okay, and I acknowledge I will send this to, uh, Ms. Davit after I give my testimony. The, the last case is already there, so I'll do the same thing here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we're gonna start with the very simple, with the very basic, and then we'll start to work her down to some site-specific details. First page is a simple tax parcel map, we've shown the subject property outlined in yellow. I know at this stage in the testimony, everybody's familiar with the location along two main roads here in the community, Milburn Avenue, and for, for purposes of my orientation, we'll say north is up on this exhibit. And then you've got Vauxhall Road, uh, which is going to run, I'll say, to the east or west, to the left and right on this particular exhibit. So, we've got significant frontage on both streets, sort of this triangular-shaped piece of property. And as we work our way to the east or to the right, uh, we are at the border with Union Township. Subject lot, single tax lot, it is actually an oversized lot in the context of the zoning scheme. Sixteen thousand four hundred square feet, or is ten thousand square feet is the minimum size requirement in the OR two Office Research District. Flipping down to sheet number two, we've now overlaid on the tax parcel maps the aerial photograph, which shows the build-out condition of the property. This is a property that has been developed as a gas station, you can see in the left-hand portion of the site, we're looking at a canopy that came in sometime in the nineteen nineties, uh, but this site has been used as an auto service station, as we now well know, and it's recognized in resolutions for ninety years, it's been part of your local landscape, uh, with a similarly uh, associated land use image and identity, uh, as what the applicant is proposing here for ninety years, so certainly an auto-centric land use uh, that has been at this particular location. As I said, the junction of two major roads in the community, I'll call them service roads, but service use is located along them. That's important to me because this is a service use that does cater to the motoring public and to the pass-by public. The surrounding land uses are varied, and we'll talk about that as well, but another key aspect from a planning standpoint is that this is a signalized intersection, which is a place where this land use likes to be because it does offer protected turning movements, the lefts and the rights, uh, sort of guarding or safeguarding the particular movements that are associated with, with this site. Third frame has a lot of colors on it, and the planning point here is that these are a number of different land use categories, we use the MOD four land use classification system, which is something that's used by our, our tax system as well. Everything you see in red is non-residential, everything you see in gold or yellow is. Everything you see in red is non-residential. Everything you see in gold or yellow is residential. We've labeled some of the surrounding land uses, and of course, the blue is the river which runs adjacent to the site. Subject site is labeled as a gas station. That's the image, identity, and association of this site, the land use that's been there for 90 years. We know the station is closed. We know it's stagnant. But I think we also know that disuse does not constitute abandonment unless there's some sort of break in the chain. And as you'll see from the ground photographs, what I think we all know and what's physically evident is this site has not been used for anything but a gas station for all these decades. Again, you've got an office building and a parking lot to the north. You've got another parking lot associated with the park to the south. Medical offices, vet clinics, jewelers, a lot of residential conversions in this area as well. Fourth slide shows the surrounding zoning and where, as you saw in the established neighborhood pattern, a lot of things going on at one location from a land use standpoint, and I'll say a nicely commingled mix of land uses. You see, the site is also at the convergence of a lot of different zones as well. The site is here in the OR2 zone. That's the blue zone. And then we've got a residential office zone on the other side of the street, which runs across the full length of Milburn Avenue. You've got a conservation recreation zone immediately to the south, and then you can see the R8, the OR2, and the R6 zone. So again, I'll say a plethora of different zones converging at this particular location. And so frame number five is what I saw when I went on the site on Friday. Friday was a rainy day. Saturday was a really nice day. I went to this site, just so happened, on the rainy day, November 13th. And this is a view of the site from Vauxhall Road. It looks like a gas station. It certainly looks like a closed gas station, but again, reemphasizing the planning point that it has not been used for anything else other than a gas station, and is clearly not being used in anything other than that presently. That's important in the issue of abandonment, whether the use itself has been abandoned. Just because the site is closed or stagnant does not mean or does not constitute abandonment. We've got a case out there that involved a horse stable that was not used for 40 years, and the courts found that that did not constitute abandonment of that particular use. So again, this has only been closed for a couple of years, whereas, again, just the fact that it's closed does not constitute abandonment. Visually here, obviously, this site is not doing anything to enhance the value and the quality of the area. We've got an open air, I'll say, environment right at the face of the road, facing the buildings that are on the opposite side. And bear in mind, this is that residential office zone district on the other side. Clear view of activity into the site from across the street. What the applicant is looking to do, what I believe is consistent with good planning, just heard it on the last application, is to create some sort of a street wall effect and pull that building down to the street to create a massing that helps obscure, I'll say, the open air or the active aspect of the use, pulling it behind the building. A building can become a buffer, especially if it's an attractive building and if it's well landscaped. And putting a solid mass, I'll say, at the apex of the triangle from a planning standpoint, I think does represent good form of development, and that's what the applicant is proposing here. Next frame, I've walked around to the corner. The signal would be, I'll say, right behind me or maybe to my right from this particular vantage point, looking back at the canopy, which was approved in the 1990s as a found site upgrade. Again, the applicant is looking to do something here that is along the lines of site modernization, site upgrades, pulling in a convenience use, which has morphed into effectively one use with this particular land use category as a motor vehicle service station. We'll talk more about that. But again, this is what you see from the public realm right now. Picture a solid mass, an attractive building and landscaping, certainly not all this pavement in the line of the public view. And then finally, I've walked around and I'm now in the office parking lot, looking back to the south. Again, looking at the canopy and again, I'll say, the sea of asphalt that's out there right now. One of the niceties of these application, of this application, is the applicant is going to green it up. And I know you heard testimony from our landscape architect last hearing, a very well-known landscape architect that's going to add beauty and quality to the particular site. So with that consideration, we'll walk the board through the primary relief that the applicant needs here and then the subsidiary relief as well. The primary relief, as we know, is a D1 use relief. I've walked this through the four parts of the Medici test, the more stringent test, which has been called out in your planner's report. I neither concede nor don't concede as to the D1. Either way, I'm going to walk it through the four elements of the D1 under the Medici test because I believe they're met here. But I think the board certainly needs to give deference to the fact that this has been a motor vehicle service station for 90 years. Reactivation is certainly a possibility and will be within the realm of reality. And clearly, we're looking at site betterment here in terms of what the applicant is proposing. Again, I see the commencement of the use dating back 90 years, predate your ordinances here in the community, and a continuation of use, and as I say, no break in the chain that would indicate a planning intent to abandon that use. So certainly, I believe that this is, can be recognized as a pre-existing non-conforming use in its current context. Let's go through those four parts of the Medici test and hit on the proofs that I believe warrant the board moving favorably on this particular application. And again, this is reliant upon the testimony that's on the record. These are not net opinions that are being made. The first part of the test, or the first prong of the test focuses on the land. All land use planning starts with the land and the physical attributes of the property that render it particularly suitable for the use that's before you. It is fundamental to the variance relief that the site be particularly suited for the use, and I believe that it is by virtue of its condition and context. Contextually, as I said, this is at the junction of two service roads, a signalized service road with protected turning movements. And condition-wise, we simply can't ignore the fact of the longstanding history of this site. It can't be ignored, and obviously, 90 years is a very long time to have that identity at this location. Second part of the test moves us from the land and moves us over to the land use law, which of course is the reason why we're allowed to zone in the first place. And we always look at those core purposes of zoning. In particular, the catch-all, the promotion of the general welfare. I believe, based on the testimony on the record, that this application will promote the general welfare in a multitude of ways. First, with the public benefit of convenience, this is going to provide easy access to basic everyday goods, food, fuel, coffee, grab-and-go items. Again, most of the floor plan here is beverage-related, hot and cold beverages that just have had a longstanding association with this particular use. Additionally, accessibility, this is going to cater to pass-by traffic. It's a use that I'll say is on the way. It's a service use on a service corridor, is a natural marriage or link between the land use and the transportation network that's around it. Also, the public benefit of efficiency. This is an easy in-and-out location. It's a short stay. It's a quick service, certainly a use that caters to a time-pressed society. We're looking at approximately three to four minutes to fuel up, three to four minutes to make a purchase in the store. People don't come here and stay generally for a long time. Also, the planning benefit of variety. It is a fundamental planning goal to provide for a variety of uses and appropriate locations. There is going to be a diversity of common product offerings here. Again, the appeal of this particular land use is the fundamental aspect of the product offerings that this land use gives. This is not retail that you can buy online. There's no competition from online sales. These are everyday items that you basically go there because you need it now. If you don't, you'll just go to the next place. Or if it's not convenient now, you'll just go to the next place. So it offers an opportunity for variety and certainly offers the planning benefit of viability as well. You'll hear testimony as we go through the combination of the two uses, but there are approximately 150,000 convenience stores here in the United States, of which approximately 120,000 sell fuel. 80% of the fuel sold here in the United States has a nexus with a convenience store. So again, there's a natural integration with the way this land use works with what the applicant is proposing. This takes underutilized land, certainly not doing anything now. It is going to put it into functional use, bearing in mind, this is a commercial zone. It is a zone that is aimed and intended for economic development and activity. This is also going to provide for the planning goal of aesthetics. The reinvestment in this property is going to be substantial. It is going to give the site a fresh new look, who will enhance the image and identity of the site, the area, and certainly the community at large, a drastic improvement over what you see in the photograph right now. Also, the planning benefit of compatibility. The new site arrangement will create a better integration with the neighborhood for a reason that I said. The building becomes the buffer and conceals the open nature of the use in the back. If we were putting a permitted office here, permitted retail service here, logically, the same form of development would follow with the building in the front, parking in the back. Additionally, we see the public benefit of sustainability, as I've said, and as you've heard, this is going to make the site greener. This is going to be a more modern, contemporary version of the land use that provides for energy efficiencies and environmental benefits as well. All of those public benefits tied directly back to the land use law. I see nothing about this application that would be violative of any of the purposes of zoning, but I especially see the advancement of Purpose A, promotion of the general welfare. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. Purpose M, the efficient use of land. And to extend, this G, the provision for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. And Purpose H, the free flow of traffic. Third part of the test now takes us away from the land, takes us away from the land use law, and focuses more on the neighborhood or the public at large. Based on the testimony on the record, and this is really the part of the application that I think has been well-vetted over the course of multiple hearings now. The board has been asking good questions. The applicant has been responsive, the public, the interested parties as well. Prior witnesses over multiple hearings have established the predicate for the planning conclusion that the site will function safely and efficiently. As I stand before you now, there is uncontroverted expert opinion on the record that the site will do so. And in my opinion, I am unaware of any impacts of a substantially adverse nature that have been unaddressed or unmitigated. I've looked through your professional reports. They all seem clean, I'll say. Police, the fire, the environmental, and the like have all been vetted here. In terms of what you've heard, just by way of recap, with respect to the negative criteria and potential impacts that could be associated with this land use, traffic is always a concern with this particular land use and always a concern with any land use. But you've heard the testimony of Hal Simoff, which has concluded no substantially adverse traffic impacts. You've heard environmental testimony that the project will meet or exceed all NJDEP regulations and requirements. Fire safety, the project will meet or exceed all NFPA 58 regulations and requirements. From a health standpoint, the project will comply with all health code requirements and regulations, waste management and the like has been discussed. Also, this is an application that is subject to outside agency approval, ADA compliance, soil erosion and sediment control certification, and county approvals. The gas station is also a land use that has to go through a licensing provision as well. So again, it is a revocable license, so if there are problems with the particular land use, again, that is something that the board can give deference to as well, the other layer of protection. Outside agencies I talked about, aesthetics, there's better integration with the area. As I said, the building in the front blocks the view of the site from the back. And then, of course, with respect to nuisances, or I'll say the lower tier of the negative criteria, your town has nuisance ordinances in effect to protect the public from any particular land use, so those police protections are in effect. Last part of the test takes us away from the site, takes away from the surroundings in the established neighborhood pattern, and looks at the vision for the area as articulated in your zone plan. I think the board can move favorably without impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance to the extent that this relief relates to a very specific site with very distinct attributes and a very distinct history. It also relates to a specific use that is distinguishable from other uses here in Milburn. As I said, a gas station is subject to an annual license, an annual license that is revocable. So there is that added layer of protection to safeguard the public in Milburn. This project is going to advance the overriding master plan goal for a stable ratable base and economic development. This is also going to advance the fundamental planning goal to reverse stagnation of sites and put underutilized land into productive use. Looking specifically at the 2018 master plan, there are specific references to not, or I'll say, recognition of non-residential vacancies on Milburn Avenue. As I said, this is a very viable, very popular land use. And also, specific recognition of vacancies around this particular site. Clearly, this is a better zoning alternative than the alternative of simply reactivating what's out there now in its current configuration. I'll make some commentary on the dual-use aspect that sort of folds in here with the use relief that the applicant is seeking. And whether treated as one use or two separate uses, C-stores offering fuel is neither new nor novel. As I said before, statistically, 80% of United States fuel comes from convenience stores. Again, 120,000 of the 150,000 convenience stores sell fuel. From an academic standpoint, planning literature and other recognizable industry standards recognize the morphing of the use. And I'll refer to the APA, the American Planning Association, the ULI, the Urban Land Institute, and ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, all recognize the singularity of convenience with fuel sales as a singular land use or a land use classification system that they've recognized in their documentation. Legally, there's a number of court cases here in New Jersey that have recognized the morphing of the use. And I've been involved with one directly up in Ridgewood, which is the Bergen Fuel case, where the use was determined to be a singular use. Also, just note the J-Siram case, the Sedala case, and the Easy Auto case. Zoning-wise, from a practical standpoint, we see a number of towns also considering this a singular land use. Butler, for example, has had this as a singular use for a while. Randolph just passed an ordinance that recognized convenience with fuel as well. For all of the reasons, I believe that the site cannot accommodate the product offerings that are being offered here. That takes care of the primary relief. The secondary relief, I believe, all falls into the relief that the applicant is seeking. Under the Palaio case, I think the board can certainly move it all as one. But to the extent the board likes to or wants to consider the relief individually, I believe that all the bulk and design relief that the applicant is seeking here would pass the flexible C-balancing test, and then, of course, the lower standard for design exceptions of reasonableness and practicability. The benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments, and I refer the board to the Pullen case. On the positive side, all of the use benefits and betterments that I cited above carry forth, and all other relief is necessary to effectuate a beneficial use. Just to run down the potential impacts associated with the, I'll say, the bundle of other relief that the applicant needs, the lot coverage at 76.6% requires relief over the 65% maximum allowed by the ordinance. But that substantially moves the needle in the right way, a drastic improvement over the existing condition, which is 92.2%. The front setback of eight feet versus 15 feet being required is mitigated by, I'll say, the robust landscaping that you heard at the last testimony, which is also, I think, going to be a drastic improvement over the current condition where that pavement comes right to the edge. Relief is needed for the sign package, which I believe through the testimony of the engineer and the architect is tasteful, simple, it blends well with the architecture, and provides that effective balancing of safe, clear and safe identification of the site without being overbearing or obtrusive. clear and safe identification of the site without being overbearing or obtrusive and will provide for safe wayfinding. Likewise, the lighting package is going to provide for safe onsite illumination without causing offsite glare. We know that under the canopy, the lighting levels for my industry standpoint need to be brighter because this is where there is an exchange of money, so there there is a safety aspect to it. Canopy is pulling away from the street and through the testimony that you heard, the lights will be cut off so that this is not going to cause objectionable glare on the street or across the street. And then finally, with respect to the landscape relief, the landscape is going to be abundant and visually pleasing and will add to the overall, I'll say, aesthetic quality of the site and the corner. With all of that said, I would like to conclude from a planning standpoint that this is an application to reinvest in a site that could use some help. I think that's obvious here. In its current condition, the site is having a negative effect on the area. We have before us an applicant that is willing to contribute to a positive, have a positive effect on the area. And from a very, I'll say pragmatic standpoint, this is going to be a modernization of what's been there a very, very long time. We may have a completely different opinion if this were something that hasn't been here for a long time. And from a statutory standpoint, the criteria for grant of relief are met and approval is warranted. With that, again, I'll pause, I'll open myself up to any redirect from council, board or interested parties.
Yes, John, just to reiterate, this is a pre-existing non-performing gas station with a canopy service station signage usage, correct?
Correct.
And that use has never been abandoned, correct?
That's correct. There's been no break in the chain.
Okay, and it's your expert opinion that this is a proposed singular use with the convenience store and gas station, not two proposed principal uses, correct?
That's the way planners recognize it academically, statistically and even somewhat legally now, yes.
Okay, and but it's also, though, your expert test belief that was being proposed here, that singular use, that convenience store and gas station is a much better alternative, not just practically, but also for the community at large in comparison to that pre-existing gas station, service station use, most predominantly because service stations are outdated, correct?
Yes. You've heard a lot of site planning testimony as to the site betterments that are being proposed here. Not only the cosmetic, but again, the better flow of traffic as testified by the engineer and just the better old site arrangement and the product offering that is clearly, I'll say, a better alternative than the the banging and clanging that may be associated with the auto repair facility. And I think we know that that is becoming somewhat of an antiquated land use as well associated with the with the filling component. From a planning standpoint, we recognize that the use has come somewhat full circle. A hundred years ago, we started with the general store, which was the sort of the modern version of the general store, the convenience store. A hundred years ago, the fuel pumps started to populate in the front of that. Over time, the fuel pumps, the convenience or the general store aspect went away and got replaced with the repair facility as more cars came on the road. Now we see the repair component being replaced by the the convenience or the beverage and the like offering as car care has become more specialized and has moved over to the auto dealership. So it's just an evolution of the land use. We know land use doesn't stay still and it changes over time.
Perfect. I have no further questions for this witness. Thank you, John.
My board members, questions? Yeah, Steve.
One clarification. You talked about the use of this site associated with gasoline, the selling of of fuel oil for the last ninety years, but this will be the first time it's been associated with a convenience store, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, second point is eighty percent or so of fuel is sold through convenience stores. But a significant portion of that is at the highway rest stop, right? We don't really have statistics on how many, what might be defined as a neighborhood service station has convenience stores associated with it. That would be a different statistic, right?
John.
Yeah, I'm processing the question. The answer is I I don't, I don't know. And just in fairness to the board, the source for that information comes from the Nielsen Group, the same market research group that studies how many people watch a certain TV show or.
Yep, I actually looked it up while you were. The eighty percent number is correct, but a significant portion of that is the highway rest stop and not the neighborhood store. My last question is, if you, you know, you've listened to the testimony and a very significant concern expressed by the neighbors of this neighborhood's gas station, is the convenience store late hours and the element that that might bring in late hours and any potential increase in crime that could be associated with that? I didn't hear anything about that at all in your testimony. Are you able to offer any testimony related to that specific point?
Thank you for that question, and I believe there is a stipulation on the record, and I'll get a thumbs up from from Matt if this is true, that the applicant has stipulated that the hours of operation would be in, is the thumbs up, okay? And so it's not going to operate in the overnight. I believe it shuts down at eleven PM, five AM, six AM, whatever the six AM, whatever the municipal requirement is. So it's this is not going to be a twenty four seven operation, which in certain respect, maybe actually serve public service and those kind of things, but we won't talk about the benefits of overnight use. The stipulation is a shutdown in the overnight use, so again, retail services are allowed here, other uses are allowed here, so there can be activity and operations on this site into the into the early evening hours.
Okay, but you haven't, you haven't actually answered my question.
Could you repeat it again, just so I get it right for you?
Sure, can you offer any expert advice, expert opinions on the concerns the neighborhood has for, you know, the potential for increasing crime or some kind of element hanging out in this place in the late hours of the evening that could cause concern and worry for the neighbors? Can you address the concern of the neighbors about that?
Well, I think there's a couple of answers to that, and I have a feeling the board is probably going to want to hear from the operator as well to how the operations will manage, I'll say, security on the site. I know we have police protection ordinances here in the municipality. Boards never like to hear that because that's an over and after the fact kind of thing. But certainly if loitering is a problem, that is something that is enforceable and can be policed. Also, we're talking about a name brand here, a national brand that certainly doesn't want to create a negative image on its own brand and on the community at large. I'm not a hundred percent sure about the security aspects of this, so I'm going to have to defer on on that point, whether there's cameras or how the applicant is managing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Adding to that question, I have a question about the the light lighting conditions in the in the area. So I know you said the hours would be reduced. What would be the lighting conditions and what's the impact on the neighborhood due to that lighting?
John, I don't know if you were at the hearing when we had discussed the lighting, but just to answer that that part of the question, we had agreed on the record that our lighting would be consistent with the hours of operation. So at eleven o'clock, the lights would turn off, but for just a handful of security lightings at low dim.
Okay, one more question on, you know, there were some concerns about the level of pollution in that area. I know this was gutted in the past and now we are resurrecting it. Is, can you provide some testimony on, you know, what steps would be taken to ensure that, you know, there is effective measures being taken to address that concern from the neighbors as well?
So if I understand the question correctly, environmental impact on the stream or just the area at at large?
The area at large, as well as the stream, yeah.
So again, this is this is a modernization of the use. This is again, subject to NJDEP regulations. The containment, the newer, the more modern subsurface tanks and the like provide that that added security that will meet or exceed those NJDEP regulations. So I think the fallback there is the testimony on the record that from an environmental standpoint, there are measures that are going to be in place to affect or to prevent any substantially negative effect on on the area.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. If I, if I understood you, and you tell me if I'm wrong. You mentioned that there were some communities that had passed ordinances that basically from a use point of view married the sale of fuel products with convenience stores. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I cited examples of two that I've run into recently where.
Does it say anything to you that Milburn is not one of them?
Well, there is a, an aspect to planning, and it's that footnote number thirteen that we come to in the Medici case. The court wrote it, I didn't write it, but they they use the phrase uses that are gaining currency, something that may not have been contemplated in the in the last round of zoning considerations. I know the master plan only dates back to two thousand and eighteen, so it's fresh. But Randolph, for example, came up with their ordinance at the end of two thousand and nineteen, December two thousand and nineteen. So about about one year ago. All I can say is it's certainly reflective of a trend where we're seeing this this transition from the auto repair component to the the convenience component. It's just a different type of offering associated with this land use.
This building has been vacant, has it not, for six years?
The site has been closed for years, yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members, Mary?
Yeah, I have a question. Did I understand that you testified that the singular singular use was enshrined in a court case?
Well, all I can tell you is I testified on a case where we postured that it was a singular land use. There was an objector, it went to court, and the court agreed with with the position that it was. That's the case that I was involved with in Ridgewood. And there were some other cases as well that that recognized that the singularity of the land use and and I ran, I can repeat them again if the record was live.
No, I was just wondering what court arena that was in, and that was my question.
Yeah, I think these were except, and I'm going to defer to our council on this if it went up to one of the higher levels, but I believe they were all at the lower levels.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members of this witness? Are you familiar with the site plan?
Yes, I actually have it here right in front of me. I don't have it for the screen share if you if you need it on the screen share.
And me?
I don't have it on the the screen share, and I could do that if I take a minute. I have it here in.
I just want to ask you one question. Can you tell us, from looking at the site plan, the number of feet between the end of the parking in front of the proposed store, the canopy where the gas pumps are located?
I need one of these to see on my plan here. What dimension are we looking for?
We're looking for, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parking spaces in front of the proposed store. Is that correct?
I see that there are seven, I'll say, standard parking spaces and one handicap space.
Okay, now can you tell us the distance between the canopy of the proposed gas pumps and the rear of the, that is the end of the of the marked parking spaces furthest away from the store itself.
Are you speaking about spaces ten and eleven in the back?
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the plan I have shows parking spaces one, two, three, four, five and six directly in front of the store.
Yes.
I'm looking at the June sixth, two thousand nineteen Spizel site plan.
Yes, I'm with you. I'm with you. And I see those, I see those eight spaces.
The dimension I'm looking for is the end of the parking space lines that are drawn on here. By end, I mean the, let me, let me get the I want to see the I don't, now I'm looking for, oh, there is, there's north. So I guess it's the easterlymost end of the parking spaces from the gas pumps that are shown under the canopy.
Yes. On my plan, they're labeled as ten and eleven. And I don't know if they're designated for employee parking spaces.
No, I'm not talking about ten and eleven. I'm talking about one through seven, right in front of the store.
Yes, and the dimension from where to where?
From the easterlymost end of those parking spaces as drawn on the on the site plan to the gas pumps.
Okay, perfect. All right, so that would be the aisle width, so.
That's correct.
Went, and I am referring to the plan by David Halls of Schwanoweed Engineering, and that is the plan last dated or dated. Well, I don't see, I don't see a date on here. But either way, sheet two of seven of the the site plans, and it's showing a dimension of twenty six feet. Twenty six feet from the from the back of those spaces that you're referring to to the canopy, which is overhead. There's still a clearance underneath. So there's additional distance to the pumps or the pump island in the middle. But I don't see, I don't see that dimension on the plans.
I don't have a ruler with me, but moment, I'll take your word for it. You think that it's twenty six feet?
Yeah, it's actually scaled. There is a dimension on the plan that I just referred to that is that is showing it twenty six feet from the back of those spaces to the canopy line.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at a different plan than you are. I'm looking at, I guess, what is designated a landscape plan. Preliminary and final site plan, but it's dated six oh six, two thousand nineteen, and it says landscape plan.
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg. Mr. McDonough is correct. If you go to David Hall's plans, there are seven sheets. And sheet two of seven, which is dated April sixteen, two thousand nineteen, does show a twenty six foot aisle width between those parking spaces and the canopy.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members before I ask the audience if there are any questions? Okay, now I have the actual site plan in front of me. And when the audience starts asking questions, I'll check it myself.
And for the record, I have the exact. And for the record, I have the exact same date as counsel just referenced, April 16, 2019, on David Hall's plans.
Okay, I see it now. All right, now, Eileen, are there any members of the public who wish to ask questions? Your-
Merrily Priceback, I believe, is with the South Mountain Civic Association, if I'm not mistaken. I did have somebody.
Hi, I am with the South Mountain Civic Association, but Mike, the president will be reading the statement.
Oh, you want to-
Merrily, let me, let me question you. This is the time of the evening in this hearing when we ask questions only.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
No statements, okay.
That's why I said the statement we read later by the president of the South Mountain Civic Association. I do have questions for Mr. McDonough.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. McDonough stated that the application meets or exceeds the DEP requirements. And I'm curious, because those of us that have been following this application have been waiting for the DEP to weigh in. When exactly did the DEP weigh in and what was their finding?
As a, as a point of clarification, this application doesn't get approved until it's approved by outside agencies, and to operate it will need to meet or exceed all NJDEP regulations.
Oh, so your statement that it has met or exceeded, you're projecting that it might meet or exceed. Okay.
Yes, sorry about the confusion.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Mr. McDonough, you also repeatedly spoke about the use of this land being consistent for the past 90 years. And I think one of the members, I think Steve also referenced this, that that may be true, that this has been a gas station for all that time. I've lived in this neighborhood for 62 years, and it most certainly has not had a convenience store on its property.
This wasn't back, I'll just caution you again, this is questions only.
Okay. Your comment about, about this being a national company, I'm a little confused. The Chestnut Market is a national company?
Well, Exxon, Exxon is, Exxon is part of the brand on this site, so yes.
Okay, but the Chestnut Mart is not, and that's, many of us are objecting to the Chestnut Mart, okay. At the last meeting about this application, we heard that the convenience store would be built on stilts because of a potential for flooding. Can you comment on whether this is an unusual design? And also comment on concerns that this might become a risk for the homeless or for animals to take up residence?
Well, the first part of the question, as opposed to the form of building or the form of construction, sounds to me like that's being done as some sort of flood mitigation or some sort of environmental factor that would affect any building type on this particular site. And if I remember, the actual building mass here is well below the actual coverage, so I can give deference to the fact that the the aspect that you were just talking about, about the building being on stilts, I would think would apply to any building on this particular piece of property. With respect to the, the building having a greater and I'm sorry if I can have to ask you to repeat the question, did you say for homeless persons or homeless-
Yeah, yeah, homeless people or animals, rodents, whatever, to take up residence underneath the building?
Oh, because it's elevated, because it's on stilts?
Because it's on stilts, yeah.
Probably more of an architectural question. I'm sure there's some sort of protection built into that, so that water passage can go through, yet solid objects can't. I don't know that for a fact, but that's something I would think would be standard building code practice. We certainly don't want anybody getting trapped underneath that building.
Okay, and when you were asked about the possibility of crime at this location, you made reference to enforcement to prevent crime. So do you have any projections about the potential impact to our rather limited police resources in town to deal with enforcement at this location?
Well, again, it's probably more of an operational question to the extent that the applicant have security cameras built in. I'll defer on, on the security protocol.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who have questions? Not comments, questions for this witness? Eileen? Anyone?
Yes, I brought over Judy Rosenthal, who has questions. And then we have one more after that.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. McDonough. I jotted this down because you said it six times. You said that the site has been used as a gas station for 90 years. What's the factual basis of that statement?
The last resolution of approval for this particular application specifically says that. For this particular site, I'm sorry.
What was the date of that resolution?
I believe it was 19-
96.
96, thank you, Matt. And yeah, it was finding of fact, number, well, I, I can, I can get that for you if you need, but it was a finding of fact in the 1996 resolution.
So you didn't do any deed searches to confirm that, is that correct?
No.
So you're not aware that, at least through the 1960s, this site was a nursery, a plant nursery, are you?
I am not aware of that, no.
Okay. You, in, in going through the Medici test, you listed a number of factors, and the first one was physical attributes that made it particularly well-suited to the site. In evaluating those physical attributes, did you take into consideration stormwater runoff that would carry oil and other environmental contaminants into the adjoining stream?
Yes, I did. Again, I have to consider the outside agencies and the additional level of public safeguard and regulation and scrutiny that goes into this particular land use.
So notwithstanding your recognition of the potential for contaminants entering the river, it's still your conclusion that its physical attributes make it particularly well-suited for the site?
Yes.
You also talked about, and I wrote this down, the quote was, "The site will function safely." Ms. McNett, could you please bring up Exhibit 1? I've labeled Exhibit 1 Reeve Circle objectors. It was emailed to you and hard copies dropped off this afternoon.
I'm not able to share screens.
Okay, can, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Hold on one second. Dave?
What?
Can you show me how to share screens, honey? Sorry, I have to get my IT guy in here, AKA my husband. Oh, there we go. Thank you, hon. Okay, it was right in front of me. I really, okay, so, Mr. McDonough, I'm showing you Exhibit 1.
You have to turn on your video.
Dave, how do I turn on my video, honey?
Okay, sorry.
This thing?
Click on what you want to show.
Oh, thanks. Double click? Can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm showing you Exhibit 1, which is a 75-page document that I obtained through an Open Public Records Act request from Maplewood Township Police Department. And this is Exhibit 1 of 3. This particular one is 75 pages. Are you familiar with-
Do you want that marked into evidence?
Please. So I have it labeled as Exhibit 1, but I imagine it would actually become Exhibit-
It will be Exhibit 02.
02, thank you. In, in connection with your determination that the site will function safely, did you look at any of the police reports from the 7-11 store located at 1712 Springfield Avenue in Maplewood, New Jersey?
Objection, the subject application is for the site in Milburn, New Jersey. This is completely arbitrary. We can pick any minutes of powder, we can find a police report.
I'd like to respond to that. This particular site, I believe, is half a mile away. Hold on one second, I'll take a look. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 1.5 miles away from the applicant's site. The fact that a, an artificial political line separates the 7-11 store from the applicant's site is of no moment. The, the fact is that it exists. And I think since the applicant has opened the door by testifying that the site will function safely, it's in the public interest to explore exactly how safe convenience stores are. Can I continue? Mr. Steinberg, is it okay for me to continue my questions? Am I muted?
Joe, you're muted.
Am I, am I muted?
No, Joe is.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Anyway, all right. Did you study any of the crime statistics in connection with any of the surrounding 7-11 stores, Mr. McDonough?
No.
Okay, so is it fair to say that you are, and I'm now pulling up my summary, you're unaware of 21 incidents, including-
Are we marking this?
Yes, why don't we? Would this be 03?
Yes, 03.
Okay, thank you. And, and for the record, 03 is a summary of the 21 incidents crimes, that is, crime incidents at 1712 Springfield Avenue, which is 1 and 1/2 miles away from the applicant's site. So, Mr. McDonough, is it fair to say that you are unaware of 21 incidents, including a robbery with a knife at the 7-11 convenience store within a mile and a half of the applicant's proposed convenience store? Is that true?
So I'll answer with one word because it's a yes or no, and then I'll qualify. No, I have not looked at police incident reports of any convenience store, either the one in Maplewood or any others. It would be atypical as part of a planning analysis to do that anyhow. Typically, we refer to these police reports if we were looking for an indication of a blight designation or an area in need of redevelopment. That's when a planner would look at these reports, but it would be atypical for a planner to consider police incidents at another site in consideration of the subject site. That would be atypical of a planning analysis, so I did not do it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I started-
That's okay.
Okay, so is it fair to say then that in considering the, what you termed the general welfare, which was the factor 2 in the Medici test, you did not consider the likelihood of crime that a gas/convenience store would attract to the area? Is that fair to say?
I, I did consider that as part of the negative criteria because there is no typical planning association with this particular land use. No conclusive evidence that this particular land use has a higher correlation with crime than any other land uses. At least, I'm not aware of any planning study in that regard.
And was it fair to say that conversely, you also have no evidence to suggest that it's not associated with a higher incidence of crime? Because you simply didn't look at it, right?
It would be atypical, it would be atypical to look at convenience stores in the area and incidents of crimes. There's, we have no association of fact pattern with this other site, other than it's a half a mile away. I, I don't know the neighborhood, I don't know the site characteristics. There are many unknowns in terms of comparing these. If, if the, this is implying that this particular site is somehow going to have all these same incidents there. From a planning standpoint, I don't, I don't accept that as heavy weight in my analysis.
Okay, well then let's turn to another 7-11 store at 490 Valley Street in Maplewood. And for the rec, could we please have this marked as Exhibit 04?
04.
And this is a 74-page document, and I'm just going to scroll through it. You know, the, the board will have this document to, to look at, at its convenience. But to summarize then, it's, it's fair to say that you also didn't consider a-
Isn't that, excuse me, isn't that the same document as 03?
No.
No.
Or a different site.
Different site.
1712.
But it's in, it's in the same summary.
Yes, I, there's three different-
So it's, so we're not going to mark it as 04? You're just referring to a different portion of 03?
No. No, 04, 04 is, wait, hold on one second, this pop-down thing keeps on getting in the way, so I can't manipulate this. Here we go. 04 is this document, which are various police incident reports from a different site at 490 Valley Street.
Okay, okay, so this is, this is a complete, this is your document that you marked Exhibit 2 is now going to be 04 in evidence?
Oh, wait a second, wait a second, I'm sorry. 02 was, no, 02 was-
1712.
Right, 1712 Springfield Avenue. 03, I believe, is the summary document.
Correct.
And 04 is Valley Street.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry if I caused any confusion.
Right, so again, just to clarify, I'm not going by street address because that's the street address only on the first page. What I wanted to just confirm is 04 is a 74-page document, which you had marked as Exhibit 2 when you-
Correct.
-your submission to Ms. Davin.
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and they, they all relate to 490 Valley Street.
What is your question of the witness?
That, thank you, Mr. Steinberg. So, Mr. McDonough, you also didn't consider any likelihood of crime as suggested by police incident reports relating to the 7-11 gas/convenience store located at 490 Valley Street, which is also approximately, hold on, again, it is 1.6 miles from the applicant. Is that correct?
I did not consider that as well. Again, for the same reasons, it would be atypical from a planning analysis. I, I don't know times of day when these incidents occurred. I don't know if there's a pattern there. There are many unknowns with that type of analysis. It could be indicative that there's a problem at that site, no doubt. I don't know.
Okay, well, just taking a look at, at the first page of Exhibit 04, can we agree that the crime occurred on February 14, 2013, which was a Thursday? And it looks like the call was received at 15:59 military time, which would have been a minute before 4:00 PM in the afternoon. You see that?
No, but I'll accept it.
Okay, and and the proposed applicant, from what I understand, would be open at four o'clock in the afternoon. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, I'd like to introduce what I've marked as exhibit three A and three B. They were only broken up into three A and three B because of file size. Could we perhaps refer to them as exhibit oh-five A and oh-five B, which for the record are police incident reports from a seven-eleven located at seven fifty-two Irvington Avenue Avenue in Maplewood?
What, what was the street address?
Seven fifty-two Irvington Avenue in Maplewood.
And on the, on the last exhibit oh-four, were they also seven-eleven?
Yes.
Okay, oh-five A and oh-five B.
Yes. Okay, and I I don't think that, we don't have the time to go through these in detail, so I'm I'm just gonna stop screen sharing and just move on with my questions. Mr. McDonough, are you aware of why the site has been closed for the past approximately six years or so?
No.
So, in the course of your investigation, you did not discover that there was an explosion at this site?
I did know there was a fire there, yes.
Okay. Well, a fire is different than an explosion. Would you, would you agree?
I, yes.
Okay.
Again, I don't know, I, from from a semantic sense, I I don't know the nature of my understanding i- is that there was a fire from what I've read. I didn't see the word explosion.
Okay. All right, we'll we'll use your word fire. In, you didn't mention that in your testimony. In going through the Medici test, did you take the fact that this site was subject to a fire? In your, in in the course of your determination that the site promotes the general welfare?
Yes.
And what was your determination as far as the impact of the fire on the general welfare?
That the project is subject to meeting or exceeding all fire code regulations, including N F P fifty-eight. I don't know the condition of the site when that fire happened years ago.
But I think you would agree with me that even sites that are highly compliant are subject to human error. Would you agree?
That goes for any land use, yes, but there are built-in protections around, around this land use that safeguards the public.
Okay, and I think you would agree that gasoline is a highly flammable material, correct?
Yes, it is, and again, in consideration of reactivation, those those tanks are there anyhow.
Speaking of the tanks, did you do any assessment? And again, this would go to the Medici test. Did you do any assessment as to the viability of the tanks? But let me, let me just back up. Just, I wanna lay a factual foundation. The applicant intends to reuse the existing tanks, correct?
No, no.
That's incorrect. They're gonna replace them?
Yes, they're gonna.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Posada.
Yes, no worries.
Okay. You talked about the general welfare and mentioned the fact that basically passer-bys would be able to obtain food, beverages, and gasoline. Is it fair to say that in assessing the general welfare and the impact on the public, you were assessing it from the standpoint of people who are passing through our community rather than the general welfare of the residents who live directly adjacent to this site? Is that fair to say?
It's a land use that caters to the to the public, both the motoring public and the pedestrian public. There were crosswalks built into place across that street multiple times as I was out there taking my photographs.
I understand, but that's, you're not really answering my question. In assessing the the public welfare, your testimony appeared to state that the public whose welfare was being promoted are people that are just passing through town rather than the residents who live across the street. I didn't hear you talk about the people who live on Reeve Circle or in the South Mountain neighborhood at all. Would you please address this board and tell them how the residents of the South Mountain neighborhood and the Reeve Circle neighborhood, as well as people whose homes, a lot of people, there are, there are homes right along Milburn Avenue, directly across from this site. Would you please tell the board how they are benefited by this, if at all?
Absolutely, they are substantially benefited by virtue of the fact that I'm sure those people drive too. Those people pass by the site, either coming home or going home. It's a convenient place to stop, get fuel and food and basic needs, so I'm sure they're part of the motoring public as well. It's not isolated to outsiders passing through the town, but people in town pass by this site every day, so it's an absolute benefit in both regards. And again, not only to the motoring public, the neighborhood has the benefit of crosswalks built into place to protect the pedestrians. So if you do live across the street or nearby, you can walk there and grab the milk or the bread or or whatever. It's it's there.
Are you aware that that there was a gentleman by the name of Harry Rosenthal who was run over when that was a, when that was a gas station, that Mr. Rosenthal was run over by a car backing out of the gas station on February fourth, it was Valentine's Day, in, I believe, the nineteen nineties. Are you aware of that incident?
I'm not. It's horrible. As planners, we try to plan the best we can. You've got expert testimony on the record that the site will function safely and efficiently. From a planning standpoint, I have to consider that this is a site that is allowed to have a building and a parking lot that people will be walking through and interacting with cars. So again, whether this is a nail salon or a barber shop or an office building or a social service building or whatever it is, there will be people walking through that parking lot. And the incident you're referring to could, we don't plan for that, but it it happens, and I don't mean to belittle it at all.
No, I I I don't, I don't take it that way, sir. In view of the, the tight, what I'm gonna call the tightness of the law, you know, you're you're getting a number of parking spots, gas pumps, a convenience store packed into roughly six thousand, sixteen thousand square feet. Was it sixteen, was it sixteen thousand?
It's sixteen thousand, yeah, yes.
In in view of the, the fact that you're packing all that into about sixteen thousand square feet, did you consider pedestrian safety and trying vis-à-vis the cars that are trying to maneuver within a relatively tight space?
Well, I like the way the plan has evolved. This is on a smaller scale of a convenience store. My understanding is somewhere along the way. It was a, it was a larger convenience store. Twenty-five hundred is about the average that we see at at these gas stations. We know we have the much larger ones, the the Wawa's and the and the Quick Checks, which are over five thousand, but eighteen hundred is a, is a much smaller site, and the ten to twelve parking spaces is appropriate for a site that's I'll say a little larger than a quarter of an acre.
As far as the the convenience for the public at large, did you consider the fact that there is on the corner of Vauxhall and Springfield Avenue, approximately one-half mile away from this site, a BP gas station, an Exxon gas station, and I believe it's a Valero, I think the third one is a Valero. Perhaps some of the other residents can correct me if if I'm wrong. Did you consider that?
Well, I I did, and I also consider again that this is a it's a use that's there, it's a protected land use that that can continue for for perpetuity. So that fact is an important part of the, of the planning evaluation here. And again, consumers like choice. It sounds like you said there's a, there's a similar brand down the road, but consumers tend to go to make fuel purchases based on brand loyalty. And I don't know if that other Exxon is on the way on on the common route. I don't know.
It's it's on Vauxhall Road, about a half mile away. Going back to the, to the neighbors and the impact on the neighbors, did you consider the impact of particularly around this time of year after, after we move off of daylight savings time, the impact of lighting on the neighbors who live immediately across the street and on Milburn Avenue of of the lighting between, say, five P M. and eleven P M. at night?
Well, I think the bar for for light pollution would have to be considering two things. One is what could be or what the zone plan contemplates. And again, it does contemplate a building and a parking lot. And there could be a juxtaposition where the parking lot's out by the street and the lights associated with the parking lot are there, the same hours, or of course, a canopy, which requires a higher level of illumination that's there right now, and if that were to be reactivated, that would also have an illumination impact. So I think the applicant has given good care here for maintaining sensitivity to the neighborhood. In terms of trying to position in the right way.
I'm sorry. In in fact, this area is actually zoned for offices, not gas stations. Is that correct?
That's why we're here, yes.
Okay, so, and in two thousand eighteen, Milburn revised its master plan. Is that correct? Do I have it right? Okay, and in the course of all of the meetings regarding the plant, the master plan and all the deliberations that went into it, into that, Milburn could easily have decided to rezone this particular lot for gas stations, which would have been in conformance with its prior use for a number of years beforehand, but it didn't. Isn't that correct?
Again, it's a yes or no question that I'd like to qualify. That's the obvious. That's the reason why we're here. And I'm not trying to be smart about it, but again, this board has a much greater level of detail than the than the governing body did. The use variance mechanism is the appropriate mechanism. It's why we have it in the statute. It's why it didn't go away when the, after the Medici case. It's the appropriate mechanism to to weigh this application based on the the greater level of detail. So in terms of the reconciliation, I think that's the way that that aspect is met here. And again, there's an element of use gaining currency. And as I said, there were references in that two thousand and eighteen master plan that recognized vacancies in the area. And I'm not sure if this is leading to the next question, but retail services are now permitted in the zone. So it's not just an office, but there are retail services that could go here.
Let's talk about those retail services. When, in your prior testimony, you said that there would be a variety of product offerings. And one of the typical offerings at convenience stores are rolling papers. Do you know whether rolling papers are going to be offered as one of the product offerings that you earlier referred to?
I don't know of anything that would foreclose that from happening. I don't know the answer, but I don't know of any anything that would render the sale of that product illegal. Rolling papers are not illegal.
Oh, I understand that, but as a, as a planner, have you ever had occasion to study whether the offering of certain products encourages certain elements of society to to visit a place and whether there's a correlation between offering certain products and crime?
No, I I don't know of any correlation between selling of rolling papers and crime. I don't.
Okay, 'cause you have not looked at that issue. Is that fair? To say?
I have not, I have not looked at that issue.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you for your questions.
Steve?
Mr. Posada. I have in my notes that it had yet to be determined whether or not those tanks would be reused or replaced based on some tests and regulatory oversight. So could you please tell us, because you said that the applicant has decided to replace the tanks, on what basis did they make that decision?
I don't know the basis that the decision has been made, but I will stip.
Well, it was Mr. Posada that said, I believe, just just a moment ago, it was Mr. Posada that said the applicant's going to replace the tank. So I'm directing my question at Mr. Posada, which is on what basis the applicant, did the applicant decide to replace those tanks? What was the test? What was the process? What was the procedure? Because my, the the last thing I have in my notes is that that was yet to be determined.
Uh, yes, we had our most recent conversation earlier this afternoon with one of the other members of N J Energy, at which time he had advised me that the protocol for this move forward will be that they will be removing and replacing the double-wall fiberglass tanks with two, with three new double-wall fiberglass tanks. It is of no doing, at least what he has said to me, because of some type of triggering event or satisfaction with D E P requirements causing us to therefore remove and replace, but but rather that was just their best practices approach. And that's all I do know, though. I do apologize. I do not know anything more than that. Again, this site is being monitored by current L S R P, and is subject to these approvals. We will continue to move forward to work to clean the groundwater contaminants at the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from either board members or members of the public for this witness?
Yes, I do have a few. A few people who I have somebody who wants Michael Pasolano. I think he wants comments. I'm I'm gonna just, these are just questions only. This is.
Questions only now.
Michael Solomon. Who's raised his hand?
Mr. Solomon, questions?
Hello. I just had a couple of, the, Mr. McDonough made reference to protective turning. And I was wondering what he was referring to specifically in regards to turning from Milburn Avenue left onto Vauxhall Road. How is that a protected turning situation?
Well, I'm not the, I'm not the traffic expert. I'm relying upon the traffic expert's testimony that the site will function safely and efficiently, but from a pure planning standpoint.
I'm on the phone.
A signalized intersection is a, is a control mechanism that an unsignalized intersection doesn't have. It's a, it's a stop mechanism that creates gaps.
Okay, there is no, my, my comment is that, my question is such that is there a turning lane from Milburn Avenue onto Vauxhall Road?
Objection, you can offer as a planning expert, not a traffic engineer. A traffic engineer will find out that site circulation and traffic movements pertaining to this location.
Well, I think this is a factual question that he's asking. Is there, is there, does he know whether or not there is a turning lane? He can answer that.
From which road to which road? I'm sorry.
So if you're on, if you're on Milburn Avenue.
So if you're on, if you're on Milburn Avenue headed west and you want to make a left turn onto Vauxhall Road, so you, in other words, going around the gas station, the proposed gas station, since there is no turning arrow and no turning lane, how would one do that? I don't know. All right, so let me follow that up. I'd have to look online to try to find. Okay, let me ask you a follow-up question then. How would the trucks that are making the deliveries, specifically the fuel deliveries and the supplies for the convenience store, how would they be making their exit from the property onto Milburn Avenue and make a turn?
Objection. I believe that testimony was made on the record by the traffic engineer.
I think I'll sustain that objection. He's not a traffic engineer.
And my last question is in terms of the, you mentioned the hours of operation of the convenience store and gas station ending at 11:00 PM. When would the deliveries of fuel and supplies and food, et cetera, to the convenience store be made?
I believe I can answer that question. I don't know if McDonough was here at the time that we had discussed that item, but we control completely the deliveries for the site, whether it be gasoline or those convenience items that are sold at the convenience store. So with that being said, we would leave it to the municipality as what they suggest for those hours of delivery, and we would agree to comply.
And what are those hours?
So there's no answer so far to that question?
Again, we leave it to the board. With that being said, we usually do is we make those deliveries during times and not we make those deliveries during non-peak hour times. So it would be made between 7:00 and 9:00, and would be made between 3:30 and 6:00 PM. We'd be outside that scope. However, that being said, if this board found, there'd be a better alternative to select a specific timeline. We can make those deliveries consistent with that proposed schedule.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, hold on, hold on. I have a question from another Anne Rosenthor.
A question from Anne Rosenthor.
Yes. Did a traffic study be accomplished? Did they do a traffic study at all on Milburn Avenue?
Yes, the traffic study included Milburn Avenue and Vauxhall.
Okay. And what were the hours that they were studying and noted?
I do-
Mr. Posada, you're not a witness here.
Right, that's what I was going to, yes.
Because I'm
The traffic study was submitted with the application. It's dated December 4, 2019. It was prepared by Harold Maltz. And Mr. Maltz testified on at least one occasion. I'm not sure which hearing he testified at. I'd have to look through my notes, but there is a very lengthy traffic study. And going by the date, this traffic study was submitted in hard copy because it predated COVID-19 and all of the Zoom meetings. So I don't believe we have a digital copy of this, only hard copy, paper copy. I could be wrong.
Eileen?
On the website.
It's on the website.
Okay. My only concern about the traffic study.
Right. Ms. Rosenthor, I'm gonna cut you off. This is not a time to hear about your concerns.
I'm not making a concern. I'm gonna make a statement.
No, not now, Ms. Rosenthor.
Not now. You'll have plenty of opportunity later.
This is just time for questions.
Questions only now.
Witness, which is Mr. McDonough.
Okay, I have someone who wanted, well, can we just, is there anyone who has?
Before you do that, Ms. Rosenthor, so you have a question for Mr. McDonough?
The question was, did he, when they did the study, did they take in the time after 5:00 in the afternoon? In other words, was it a traffic study that showed that there's very little traffic when it is beyond 5:00, 7:00, 8:00, very traffic?
Well, I have to cut you off again.
As Mr. Steinberg noted.
This is, this is not a traffic expert. And he didn't, he didn't testify as a traffic expert, nor did he testify as to any traffic studies. So that question is not appropriate for this witness. Eileen, is there someone else who wants to ask a question?
Well, can we, is there anyone who has any questions? Because I have had people who have sent me statements that they want someone to speak on their behalf, but they're not raising their hands. I don't know if they have comments or if they have actually questions. So if there's any-
This is not the time for comments, folks.
Anybody else has questions?
Question for Mr. McDonough.
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, Mr. Posada, your next witness.
If I may, are we gonna have the first of sequencing, Mr. Pesolano come for his objectional planning testimony? Or are we gonna say that's the end? I just want to make sure that.
I'm sorry.
I don't-
Say that again. I didn't hear that.
I believe that Mr. Pesolano was here to provide planning testimony and objection to this application. Are we gonna entertain his testimony now or say that to the conclusion of my witness?
Yeah, that's why I was asking. I wasn't really sure what, how he was presenting, but he hasn't raised his hand.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Pesolano wants to speak on his behalf, but I do believe that he is providing planning testimony and objection to this application.
Okay, I'm gonna bring him over. It was like, there we go. Okay.
If I may speak, Mr. Steinberg, there may be other witnesses of the applicant yet to testify. I I understand that correctly.
Well, I don't know. Mr. Posada, do you have any other witnesses?
The only witness I would offer is if Mr. Topper wants to hear operationals from the applicant's representative. I'd be more than happy to offer him. Absent that, no, I have no further witnesses.
It's up to you as to whether you want to put another witness on as to operational procedures. That's your call. It's your case.
You know, I like to move forward. No, I will not.
So the answer is no?
No, no, go for the witnesses.
Okay. Now, Mr. Pesolano.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Do you need to be sworn?
Yes.
Okay, if you would just raise your right hand. Sir, do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truthful truth unto the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Michael J. Pesolano, that's spelled P-E-S-S-O-L-A-N-O. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Licensed still in good standing, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Forty years of experience as a professional planner. Licensed originally in 1984, following a Master of Urban Planning degree from City University of New York Hunter College, just like Mr. Phillips. And I have met with the neighborhood that has assembled itself to comment on this application and object to the granting of the relief. So in the course of preparing, I have done a number of things, but maybe the board wishes to establish my qualifications further. I've been a witness before this board, accepted as expert planning witness on several prior occasions and served-
Your qualifications are accepted as a professional planner.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Appreciate that.
Mr. Pesolano, do you represent? Which neighbors do you represent? Where, what neighborhood? In this zone or in the residential zone?
The Reef Circle neighbors.
Okay.
Collaborated with me to produce objection testimony.
Thank you.
I'm not an attorney, so I don't formally represent.
No, I know. I'm just trying to figure out who the players are. So that's, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Okay, proceed.
All right, thank you. I know the hour is late, but I will do my best to be concise. Unfortunately, this is a multi-layered application and leaving something out just in the interest of time just isn't fair to anybody. So it's gonna take some time. So
Proceed.
But he's okay with that. I will move forward.
Proceed.
Thank you. You're very well aware of the application, having gone through many hearings on it, so I won't belabor that. But to prepare, I did look at the application materials that were posted on the website and visited the site and talked with my clients to understand their concerns. And also prepared myself by looking at the master plan materials for the township and the relevant applicable zoning regulations. I reviewed Mr. Phillips's planning memo. Bear with me one second. I'll give you the date. September 18, 2020. I'll point out that as part of my professional experience, I've reviewed a great number of applications concerning gas stations, combined gas stations and convenience stores and the like. I've throughout my four decades as a practicing planner, reviewed hundreds of site plans and provided critical commentary on not just the land use, not just the zoning, not just the landscaping, not just the parking, not just the circulation on and around the site, not just the building aesthetics, but many other things. I want to have the freedom to comment on traffic-related issues to the extent I see them. I will not be offering traffic data, traffic analysis that a professional traffic engineer might provide, but I would like to offer observations about how these types of uses work based on my long years of professional experience and awareness of evaluating sites such as these and uses such as those that are in the application. Is that agreeable before we get into any kind of dynamics? Okay, thank you. So starting off, we have principal uses not allowed in the zone, that one being gas station use, albeit it, a gas station existed there. No disagreement with Mr. McDonough's assertion on that. However, the other item of use relief, D1 use relief for use not permitted concerns proposed retail use in the form of a convenience store. This, to me, right off the bat represents significant intensification of the utilization of a site that has not grown in its site area. It's still a 16,400 square foot site. Yet another highly intensive use, first of all, a gas station is a highly high-intensity use in my experience and observation. Secondly, a convenience store, whether it's with a gas station or not, is also a high-intensity use with a lot of comings and goings. Testimony earlier this evening was that people are in and out, and I would agree with that characterization. I would go further in saying people are in and out in quite a bit of a hurry. In other prior applications, operators of multiple gas station convenience stores declared that that is what the industry does. It provides goods and services for people who are in a hurry. And that's critically important to the bulk of my remaining testimony because we're talking about not just two uses that the zoning ordinance doesn't allow, but two particularly intensive uses combined on a very small site in a congested area of the community. The congested area of the community, I concluded by visiting the site and observing the roadway network around it. Vauxhall Road and Milburn Avenue, as you know, too busy thoroughfares with frequent congestion piling up when the lights change. But it goes farther than that. The site wedged into the vortex of that angle that's formed by Milburn and Vauxhall provides for not just issues relative to those roads, but the many multiple directions and turning movements that are directly in front of the site itself. The hottest spot of, in my observation, for activity and potential conflicts between not only vehicles but pedestrians and vehicles is the area between the proposed driveway on Milburn Avenue and Reef Circle. This is an area where turning movements can go many different ways from many different directions. In the interest of time, I'll just characterize it at that, but if any board member wishes me to explain further, I will be glad to do so. But I observed a plethora of potential conflict points for traffic going to and from the gas station, convenience store, proposed site, going to and from Reef Circle, going to and from the traffic signal, going to and from the adjacent office building to the east on Milburn Avenue and beyond. Throw a few pedestrians in the mix, and I think you have a fairly volatile situation for potential mishaps that doesn't have to happen through guiding this site to a different utilization that was proposed in the application before you. Because this site itself, this application proposes two intensive uses that involve people in a hurry, coming and going quickly, there may be instances where that type of traffic on a continuous basis breaks down once in a while. Somebody fails to observe an incoming car, an outgoing car, an outgoing pedestrian. That's why the size of the site matters so much in my analysis. We have a 16,000 square foot site, 16,400 square feet roughly. The zone wants a site, a minimum size of 10,000 square feet or a single use. A single permitted use, but a single use. The subject proposal seeks to provide two intensive, busy principal uses on one 16,400 square foot site, so that mathematically, the result is 8,200 square feet for each use. That combined with the issues about access and circulation and multiple potential conflict points, I think it's material to the board's consideration of the merits of this application against the backdrop of the testimony offered by Mr. McDonough about the benefits. The site, by my observation, by virtue of its design, lends itself to cut-through traffic. Cut-through traffic meaning frustrated drivers wanting to go around intersection using the site itself as version.
We didn't hear you.
Board, can you guys hear me?
No.
Say again.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. These are traffic conclusions. These are net opinions. Mr. Pesolano is qualified as a planner, not a traffic engineer, and absent those actual findings of fact by licensed traffic engineers who qualify for his board, I do not believe that he has the opportunity to opine on these net opinions.
Mr. Pesolano, you are very, very close to the edge, if not over the edge.
I've spent four decades commenting on site circulation, with all due respect to the parties involved. If I cannot form an opinion about site circulation being adequate or not.
Are you talking about site circulation on the site? Are you talking about site circulation on the streets around the site?
I will keep it to site circulation on the site, if that will please.
I'll permit that.
And the board on that. Is that agree? Is that agreeable?
That's a good idea, Mr. Pesolano, because cut through traffic is a violation of Title thirty-nine.
Yes.
So we are not going to speculate on people breaking the law.
I, I'm with you. My observation is that the conditions are proposed for that to happen. Regardless of the best intentions of the law and anyone.
Yes, we have agreed at the prior hearings that we will agree to the Title thirty-nine enforcement statute.
Fine. Let me move on. I also noticed that the driveway on Melbourne Avenue points itself directly up a residential street, Reef Circle in particular. The intensification of visitors to this site and their need to exit may cause an increase in headlights shining on homes over and over again. Not necessarily a desirable outcome. What was also notable about the application from a planning perspective, purely a planning perspective now, is that the proposed building, that's the addition of the new use, needs to encroach severely on the front yard setback of both streets according to the site plans that were, were posted. Where the proposed setback is eight feet on Melbourne Avenue, where fifteen feet is required. Oh, setback on Vauxhall is eight feet, where fifteen feet is required. Unless that's been modified by a subsequent plan that I'm not aware of. I see two very prominent front yard setback violations. Am I on target there with the accuracy of that assessment? And the reason I ask it in the form of a question, I'm not to, trying to look dumb. I saw that in Mr. Phillips' review, just the Melbourne Avenue eight-foot setback was cited. Not the one on Vauxhall, but because this is a corner lot, it has two front yards. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on.
Zoning officer a chance to look at it.
Sure, I can wait.
I believe the eight feet is. I think it's on both.
Pardon me?
It's on Melbourne as well as Vauxhall.
Thank you for checking that, Ms. David. Appreciate that. So we have a building proposed on a too small site, and here's evidence of why it's too small a site, that the principal structure, the larger structure of the two, the other one being the canopy for the gas pumps. But the larger structure, most prominent one, the most solid one, being right up to, within eight feet of the lot line. But more interestingly, and more detrimentally, that eight-foot setback is actually the edge of a future right-of-way for both streets. According to the right-of-way for widening, that's noted right on the site plan for my reading of the plans. So some point down the road, the county needs to widen that intersection that will bring the edge of, of the, those two rights of way, eight feet closer to wherever the building is proposed. But by my calculations, that means a zero setback in the final picture under this configuration. And again, that's where fifteen feet is the required setback. While I don't have a site plan or survey for the office building to the east, my estimation of the relative location of the front of that building suggests it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty feet back from the sidewalk, which may or may not be the actual edge of the right-of-way. But looking at an aerial image the edge of, the Melbourne edge of the existing canopy on the subject property is in line with the front wall of the office building to the east. So I bring that up because the defined corridor, if you will, of building wall is much more set back than, than a zero distance from, from the right-of-way. Such that the imposition of even a one-story building into the vortex of this sharp angle represents everything that planning doesn't stand for in the township of Melbourne in my observation. This is the wrong place to, to squeeze a, a building. And it's being driven simply by the desire of the applicant to add another non-permitted use to this particular site. So in order to accommodate that use, the board is being asked also to vary the, the setback in very prominent location, which is also a gateway into the township coming from Union Township to the immediate south. Just across the river, in fact. So is this the, I ask, is this the type of gateway that Melbourne Township will be proud of by having a building that's jammed into the corner of the lot? In new construction, this is, you know, it's one thing if it was already there. But this is being proposed anew. Everything's being scraped from the site. And it's being rebuilt from the ground up in this proposal. So those are the circumstances behind why I think this setback violation is so egregious. It, it doesn't have to be, first of all, and it's contrary to what the zone scheme has sought to have play out on the ground. Building wall is one thing. Mr. McDonough mentioned that. But this is being proposed in an inappropriate location. Being too close to both major streets. Not only that, but the rear of the building is facing this prominent intersection of public thoroughfares. That is very, very unusual. I believe that the zone plan and zoning standards for this zone and, and the surrounding zones encourages front-facing buildings. So it's one thing for the, the building to be too close. It's another thing, another negative for it to be offering the backside forward, if you will. The project overall is, is too ambitious, in my opinion, after studying all of the, the material. It involves two non-permitted use elements which have their own spacing, circulation, signage requirements, being shoved into a site that is simply too small to accommodate safely in this particular location. The application, at the same time, acknowledges unusual features on the site such as the sharp angle at the front of the site and the floodway at the rear, while still seeking to, to pack another, an entirely separate principal use onto the property. Again, without any increase in, in the lot area to do so. I believe that both use elements together can be, can represent an even more intense use operation than either of them individually. But let's be clear, neither of them are desired by the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. And very, as recently as twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, Planning Board and Governing Body weighed in on how these uses might relate to the township and, and what locations. And there was no movement to allow either one as permitted or even conditional uses. Because of the extreme activity on the site that could reach quite a frenzied peak at certain times of the day, particularly lunchtime, is my observation when these combination facilities are really busy. There's need to take stock of, of the safety of all of the users. It is incumbent on a board, a zoning board, as well as a planning board to do that. So in the context of considering the application's benefits, as earlier testimony declared, it's important also to recognize the potential harm that can come from too intensive of, of an arrangement on too small of a site. Among the people using the site and being in potentially harms way on the site are pedestrians going from the pump islands to the convenience store and people going back to their cars from the convenience store. People coming in and out of the site to use the facilities there. Also in the mix are pedestrians. I would estimate among them would be teenagers and younger children who are drawn to this particular type of retail use, a convenience store that offers such goodies as soda, candy bars, and ice cream, snack foods and the like. So for all of these users to mix in a site that could at one point be quite congested with delivery vehicles, even just customer vehicles queued up or circulating around the pump island. Some possibly having trailers in tow, such as landscapers, contractors, and so forth. You could start to get the picture here of how this site can really be quite hazardous to all of the users because it, it's just not adequate to accommodate the two principal uses that are proposed here. So the compounding of effect of many potentially distracted drivers in too small an area, I think is, is potential danger. I do not find that a, a need for this combined use has been demonstrated. In earlier testimony, it was noted that these uses like to be at signalized intersections and they like to be on commercial corridors. But that's not a requirement of the community. The community does not have to have or entertain a gas station on every arterial street that is within the community. We have Euclidean zoning, which divides uses into separate sectors of, of the community here. So it makes infinite sense that the, the governing body has legislated that gas stations, not only, not gas stations, but not retail stores of any kind may touch down within the OR two district. And so I think it's a false premise to conclude that if you have a, a, a commercial corridor, it's an automatic to, to have a, a gas station and C store within that corridor. Secondly, and perhaps more importantly, there are ample opportunities for both retail consumption and gasoline consumption readily available within less than half a mile of, of the subject property. So I don't think a, a clear case has been made for a need here. Also, there is no evidence that I'm aware of that the citizens of the community have petitioned their governing body for one of what is proposed on the site. The, again, the governing body had the opportunity to fold it in to the mix based on the asserted longstanding experience of gas sales on the subject property, but chose not to. The retail and, I'm sorry, the retail services definition, as was pointed out in Mr. Phillips' memo, was amended in twenty nineteen to make that clear that it does not include retail sales. Retail sales are a completely different definition. I'd be happy to, to read that for anyone who cares to, to, to know what it specifically says, the two types of definitions. But retail sales of goods, not permitted, retail services are permitted. Additionally, if retail is encouraged on this particular site, I think it is a negative for the overall zone scheme in the following way. When we have uses divided into specific districts, we want those uses to succeed from a planning perspective, as well as a community management perspective. We want those uses to succeed and thrive and, and be a vital part of the community. Melbourne Township has made its declaration as to where it wants to see retail uses be and thrive. This is not one of those locations. So to put a retail use here would have the negative result of siphoning off business vitality and retail business activity in the zones where it is permitted and where we do want to see it encouraged. Again, convenience retail is readily available. There is a CBS to the west, not far from the site, a Walgreens to the south, and the shopping center off of Vauxhall Road, just across the river from the, the subject property, as well as many other places to obtain food. It is not something that I see as a burning need in the community. I pardon me for that, for that language. The site did suffer fire. I didn't mean to say it that way. It's just one of my phrases. This property does not exhibit any particular need to feature a retail store or, or gas station for that matter. With an application of this type, there are both D variances and C variances. The other element of D1 relief is in the combination of two principal uses on one lot, which is, is a common thing in many municipalities where I've worked. And it's staying around. There are longstanding prohibitions against two, two principal uses, regardless of what they may be. But just as the testimony earlier indicated, there was a trend towards these uses being merged. There is also plenty of evidence that there are standalone gas stations run by small operators still persisting despite the trend of combination of fuel and, and convenience sales. I heard a question earlier from a board member, Mr. Toher, is that how you say your name? I'm sorry. Steve Toher or Toeger had asked about the location of combined fuel sales and convenience stores maybe being more skewed towards the highway locations where there is a, an absence of other facilities. And I, I would echo that. I think the fuel and convenience operations as standalone things, where they're not both in the same location, are more visible in urban and semi-urban and suburban environments in my, in my travels throughout northern New Jersey anyway. The reasons for not approving two principal uses, these two particular principal uses I've spoken to so far, but to give you the full picture of why I think approval is not warranted, I'd like to also speak a moment about the second prong of the negative criteria, which is, does the granting of the use relief substantially impair, or would it substantially impair the intent and purpose of the substantially impair, or would it substantially impair, the intent and purpose of the the zone plan and zoning ordinance? Again, these, the prohibition on gas stations and retail stores recently affirmed in the 2018 master plan reexamination, and again, touched on by the governing body in its amendment of retail services definition in 2019, putting putting this particular topic of retail sales in clear focus in front of the legislative body. So I I think that there are multiple levels of conflict with the purpose and intent of the zone plan and zoning ordinance from a gas station perspective. There's a reason it's not permitted. Office and service retailer wanted, not a gas station. And the governing body clearly intended to not encourage such a use here. A retail convenience store. The structure of the zone plan says retail sales not permitted by specific intent even in this particular zoning district, this location. The rear of the building facing front conflicts with the ordinance structure of wanting a typical building to face forward. And this is certainly manifest on the ground today, where one can readily see most, if not all, of the other buildings in the area face forward, instead of the the rear of the building orienting towards the public. The ordinance wants signage to be diminutive in in few and number. We have a sign relief required, including signage on the canopy. The canopy itself is not a permitted graphic element in the the sign section of the ordinance. So that this proposal constitutes an excess number of signs or identification elements claimed to be needed to support uses that don't belong there in the first place. As far as lot coverage goes, very sharp contrast with what the ordinance and the zone plan seek to accomplish in this particular location, which is both floodway and flood hazard area. This is, such areas are critically important for minimizing impervious coverage for obvious reasons, so as not to contribute to flooding when it happens. Yet this project proposes to set, to add a second principal use and a building with coverage to achieve its goals. And so this is in direct conflict with the coverage objectives for flood-prone areas in the township of Melbourne. The lighting intensification beyond the maximum allowed is very contrary to the zone plan, which would want such things more in a much more exclusively commercial area. Take exception with sheet three of Exhibit A five presented by Mr. McDonough, which characterized the uses directly across Melbourne Avenue as commercial. While the state data set might show it as that, I know it from personal observation and discussing with the neighbor there, the next home over on Reef Circle, that there are apartments in those buildings. So they are mixed-use office and residential, so doesn't matter what your tenure is, if you're a resident, you're entitled to the same protection of the zoning laws as as any other type of resident. So I see this being a particularly inappropriate location for very brightly lit use, together with all of the use intensity I spoke to before, making this site really something that should not be in proximity to residential uses, in my opinion. Any deviation from the landscaping standards and the landscaping ordinance, I think, is a negative. When you're clearing a site and starting from scratch, particularly inserting two intensive uses in an already developed area, providing for adequate landscaping buffering is a must, in my opinion, and I think that should be rigidly adhered to. So I I feel from what I just spoke of that the second prong of the negative criteria is not satisfied because all of these defects in in the application would serve to substantially impair the purpose and intent of of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The site itself is a sensitive location because of the the location at the intersection of two busy roads, its internal circulation issues. It's also a sensitive site because of floodplain regulations, discouraging building in flood hazard areas. Again, every little bit makes a difference in a floodplain when you talk about extra runoff at the time of a storm. So it might sound like it's a it's a good thing that it's not, it's proposed, it's seventy-six point six percent instead of ninety-two percent, which is the current condition, but these reflect on the idea that the applicant wants to start from scratch by removing old pavement and building the the proposed facility. So at the minimum, I believe it's imperative that, sticking with that standard of development review and scrutiny is particularly warranted in a a site that's not just floodplain, but floodway and frequently impacted by flooding, according to my interview of the neighbors I'm working with, who I've seen at firsthand. So these factors, you know, speaking also of the the front setback relief in a prominent location, highly contrary to the types of outcomes the zoning ordinance wants to encourage. All these factors strongly suggest that granting of any use relief here significantly challenges the basic foundations of the zoning scheme on multiple levels, and further suggests that granting of relief may indeed constitute zoning by variance to zone, rather than through the governing body, which is the only municipal body with the power to zone. Regarding the interpretation of the 2018 Master Plan Reexamination Report, I was struck by the section that specifically speaks to the review of the OR two district in that document. And it's just a couple of paragraphs, but while it is true, there's some concern about vacancy on the south side of Melbourne Avenue. The report goes on to say that although no specific changes are proposed at this time, this district may need to be revisited should vacancies persist and or conditions worsen in the future. To me, if an area is needing possible attention by the planning board and governing body in the form of a different approach to to land use, I would conclude that now is certainly not the time to author authorize a totally discordant use arrangement that's not sanctioned by either of those bodies, as it would be very limiting to the options that that might follow, given careful scrutiny of this entire area, as is suggested may be coming. So I think it would be premature to sort of tie the hands, if you will, of of the governing body and planning board where the use that is discordant at best on on the entire area for the reasons I've stated. Part of the requirements for the Medici analysis include a finding by the board that the site is particularly suitable. I am offering a twist on that terminology by concluding that I feel this site is particularly unsuitable for not just the non-permitted retail store, but the combined use of a retail store and a gas station on this rather smallish lot. And for the following reasons, and there there are just six, so this will bring me to the end of my remarks, so hang in there. One, we have a congested area, multiple potential conflict points, especially on the Melbourne Avenue side. We have a building that encroaches significantly on Melbourne Avenue up to the edge of the future right of way. Coming with this encroachment, the site is so small, it forces the rear of the building to to face front, a very contrary and unusual arrangement within the township of Melbourne, within the Melbourne Avenue and Vauxhall Road, roadways. The site size at sixteen thousand four hundred square feet is another measurable indicator of its portability. The zone wants each single use to occupy at least ten thousand square feet. As I mentioned before, this project proposes only eighty-two hundred square feet for each of two high-intensity uses that are not permitted here by the zone plan. The proposed uses here are not even permitted in the adjacent residential office district directly across Melbourne Avenue or the C district to the east across Vauxhall Road, the Conservation District. So they are more particularly, these two proposed uses are more particularly impactful to the zone plan per the Price v. Hameji case, which said that non-permitted uses at the edge of a zone where they are permitted are less impactful to the zone plan than where the uses are not permitted nearby. And we have the latter situation looking at at this site. Finally, the proximity to residential uses clearly inappropriate, an inappropriate location for site intensification of the magnitude that is proposed by this application, along with all the other defects that I have spoken to. So thank you for listening. I feel this application that does not warrant approval because it fails to satisfy all of the required criteria, the bulk relief of not in keeping with good planning even, so I I find that the application suffers from a great deal of defects that suggests approval is not warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Passalano. Right now, Mr. Posada, here's the deal. Three things. One, I know you've got cross-examination of this witness, but it is now ten forty-four by the clock on my laptop, and I know you're going to take more than sixteen minutes of cross-examination, and you need some time to prepare for it. Number two, Eileen, do we need a further extension of time here? For Mr. Posada, and while Eileen is looking that up, and I'm pretty sure the answer is yes.
I thought he gave us until the end of December.
I did. I gave you the end of the year.
So you've already given us till the end of the year?
Yes.
Well, we're not going to come to a vote tonight, that's clear. So, Eileen, when do you see this matter coming back before the board? I know that we don't have a 2021 calendar yet.
We have a December twenty-first meeting.
I think we have time on it, December twenty-first meeting, and I'll make an announcement in a minute. Now, Mr. Posada, one other question for you. I just may have missed this, so enlighten me. Is it the position of the applicant here that the applicant has the right to have a gas station on this site?
Yes, based on the pre-existing non-conforming condition that was recognized the nineteen
Notwithstanding the six-year that the site has been vacant.
It has been vacant, but never the, never the use was ever abandoned.
Then your position is the use was never abandoned.
Yes.
I got it. I got it. Okay. Now, let me make a, an announcement that this matter will be heard next on December twenty two, is it?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, December twenty-first at seven PM on, again, on a Zoom meeting, unfortunately. We're not going to be back at City Hall in 2020. That's definitely for sure.
We're not even going to be back on 2021.
Yeah, let's hope that it's 2021 at least.
Do we have other cases on on the twenty-first?
Pardon me?
Do not have any cases scheduled on the twenty-first.
Oh, good.
Good.
Okay. So we're we're carrying this case without further notice by the applicant under the statute to seven PM on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty, on a Zoom meeting. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there anything else, Gail, that you can think of?
No.
Get me out of here. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everyone raise your hand so I can see it, if you're in favor of the motion. It looks like it is unanimous. So I'll see you guys next on December. Is it December two?
No, December seventh, I think.
December seven, and then December twenty-one. And I hope that you all have a great Thanksgiving in this wonderful time we're in, okay?
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, be careful. And
Thank you.
Mr. Passalano, you you will have the pleasure of meeting Mr. Posada on opposite sides of this case when next we see you in the second meeting in December. Good night, everybody.
I can't wait.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.